Well, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the National Capitol Planning Commission's June 3, 2021, public meeting. Ms. Costa, could you please take the role?
Sure. Commissioner Trueblood?
Here.
Commissioner McMahon?
Good afternoon.
Commissioner May?
Here.
Commissioner Argo?
Here.
Commissioner White? Commissioner Wright?
Here.
Yes. Commissioner Dixon?
Here.
Commissioner Cash, I believe is not here today. Commissioner Davis?
Here.
And Commissioner Davenport?
Here.
Thank you. You do have a quorum.
Thank you. Well, noting the presence of a quorum, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today's meeting is livestreamed and will be available in a few days as a video on NCPC's website. If there is no objection, the agenda is adopted as the order of business. And now we will play a short video clip of the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Interior of our delicious hands, one nation indivisible, in the beginning and justice for all.
And at this time, I'd like to pause for a moment of silence for all those affected by COVID-19 in our nation and around the world. And in response to the COVID-19 guidance on public gatherings, NCPC shall conduct its meetings online until circumstances change. I want to share how we will be conducting commission business today. Votes by the commission will be conducted by roll call. When commissioners wish to be recognized, they should unmute, turn on their webcams, and request to be recognized. During commission deliberations, I will use a round robin format to ask each commissioner if they have any questions or comments. During deliberations, all commissioners should be on video during that time unless you are experiencing technical difficulties. When you wish to put forward a motion, a second, or an amendment, please unmute, identify yourself, and make the motion. Before we proceed with the rest of the agenda, in the absence of a chair, the commission must nominate and vote on who should run the June meeting, which is the second agenda item. Is there a motion?
So move.
And the motion, Commissioner Dixon?
Yes, so move.
And is there a statement on the motion as to who should run the meeting?
Commissioner White.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. A motion that I, as vice chair, run our meeting today has been moved and seconded. Ms. Costa, could you please take the vote by roll call? And commissioners, please say yes, no, or abstain.
Okay. On a motion by Commissioner Dixon, seconded by Commissioner May. Commissioner Trueblood?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo? Commissioner Argo? Oh, I see you saying yes.
Yes.
Got it. Okay. Vice Chair White?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
And Commissioner Davenport?
Yes.
I believe that was unanimous.
The eyes have it. So thank you, fellow commissioners, for electing me to run this online meeting. Agenda item three is the report of the vice chair. And under authorities delegated to the chairman by the commission, I approved a transfer of jurisdiction of lands from the National Park Service to the District Department of Transportation for intersection improvements at Pennsylvania and Minnesota Avenue Southeast, which will make the intersection far more rational for both automobile drivers and pedestrians. And as importantly, will consolidate park space to make them more usable. Agenda item number four is the report of the executive director, Mr. Acosta.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today, the commission will hear an update on the Pennsylvania Avenue Initiative. We would also like to invite members of the commission and the general public to attend our upcoming panel event, America's Civic Stage: Ideas to Celebrate Pennsylvania Avenue, on Tuesday, June 29 at noon. This expert panel discussion will be moderated by Kathy McQuiggin.
Looks like Mr. Acosta froze up.
Yes, I was going to say that if the director rejoins us, we'll continue.
Right back?
You're back.
You're back.
All right. So I'll just speak this quick. You will find further information about the upcoming Pennsylvania Avenue panel on our website, and you could also RSVP on our website, too. So we hope you're able to join us. On May 25, NCPC, in partnership with the DC Office of Planning, held a virtual event open to the public. What's the big deal with a little security to engage in dialogue around security in public space? The panel of urban designers and security experts discuss the impact of recent security measures that have impacted our public spaces. Many thanks to the panelists and our partners at the DC Office of Planning. Also, if you had missed the event, the video is available online on our website. That concludes my presentation. There's also a written report in your packets. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Acosta? If not, thank you very much for the report. I'm looking forward to the Pennsylvania Avenue report and the special session presentation. So agenda item five is the legislative update. Ms. Guiler?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I do not have anything to report at today's meeting.
Thank you. Agenda item six is the consent calendar. There are eight consent calendar items on this month's agenda. The first is for approval of preliminary and final site development plans for the placement of temporary facilities at the Jefferson Memorial, submitted by the National Park Service. The second is for approval of preliminary and final site development plans for volleyball courts on the national malls, submitted by the National Park Service. The third is for approval of preliminary and final site development plans for 15th Street safety improvements, submitted by the National Park Service. The fourth is for approval of final site and building plans for the War Gaming Center at Marine Corps Base Quantico, submitted by the United States Department of Defense. The fifth is for approval of preliminary site and building plans for the P-734 main side parking garage at Marine Corps Base Quantico, submitted by the United States Department of Defense. The sixth item is for approval of final site and building plans for the Humphreys Engineer Center Maintenance and Supply Facility, submitted by the United States Department of Defense. The seventh is for approval of final site and building plans for the Humphreys Engineer Center Training Support Facility, submitted by the United States Department of Defense. And finally, the eighth item is for approval of comments on concept plans for the modernization of Building 002 at the Beltsville Agricultural Research Center, submitted by the United States Department of Agriculture. Are there any questions regarding the consent calendar items? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
This is Paul McMahon. I make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon's your second?
Second.
I didn't catch who made the second there. I heard a couple of voices.
I seconded it, but I heard someone else.
We'll go with Commissioner May and seconded the motion. Ms. Costa, can you please confirm the motion and the second and take the vote by roll call?
Yes. The motion was made by Commissioner McMahon. The second, I guess uncontested, was by Commissioner May. And with that, Commissioner Trueblood?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Vice Chair White?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
And Commissioner Davenport?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The motion has carried. So the first item on the open session is agenda item 7A, approval of preliminary and final site development plans for the President Franklin D. Roosevelt Prayer Plaque. Ms. Dowker?
Good afternoon, Madam Vice Chair and members of the commission. The National Park Service, on behalf of the Friends of the World War II Memorial, submitted preliminary and final site development plans for the President Franklin D. Roosevelt Prayer Plaque for your review and comment. In June of 2014, Congress passed Public Law 113123, which directs the Secretary of the Interior to install a suitable plaque or inscription within the area of the World War II Memorial with the words that President Roosevelt prayed on D-Day. The selected location for the plaque, the Circle of Remembrance, is located within the northwest corner of the World War II Memorial precinct, highlighted in yellow in this image. The World War II Memorial was constructed in 2004 and honors the 16 million who served in US Armed Forces during the Second World War. Here you see the memorial with the Circle of Remembrance to the right, highlighted in yellow. FDR's Prayer for the Nation, shown to the right, broadcasted on D-Day, June 6, 1944. It is roughly 500 words in length and was spoken over radio the night before the invasion. Before discussing the proposed design, I'll provide background on the criteria and prior decisions regarding site selection and plaque placement and design. In 2015, the applicant established 10 criteria to guide site selection for the plaque. Staff supported these criteria, particularly for the site to provide opportunities for quiet contemplation. The 2015 site evaluation included four locations within the World War II Memorial precinct, highlighted in red. The commission supported the Circle of Remembrance as the site for the plaque, which is located near the Atlantic Arch and Eisenhower's D-Day inscription. The Commission of Fine Arts, or CFA, and the National Capitol Memorial Advisory Commission, or NICMAC, also supported this location. Next, I'll discuss the plaque placement and design criteria. In 2016, the applicant established eight criteria to guide the plaque placement and design within the Circle of Remembrance. Staff supported these criteria, particularly for the design to have visual connections with the World War II Memorial and be sympathetic with its character. In 2016, the commission supported alternative two, the threshold to the Circle of Remembrance as the preferred location for the plaque, and noted this alternative incorporates the plaque and completes the geometric form of the circle. In 2017, the commission reviewed design concepts for the plaque at this location and commented that both alternatives could be developed as an appropriate design. The applicant selected alternative A, a symmetrical design of a freestanding plaque to advance in design development. Since 2017, the applicant has advanced design plans while considering the criteria for site selection and plaque placement and design, particularly retaining the site's contemplative character, focusing views to the Atlantic Arch and Memorial precinct, and aligning with the World War II Memorial design and character. Regarding the existing conditions, the Circle of Remembrance was designed to provide space for quiet reflection away from the bustling Memorial Plaza. However, the existing materials, including wood benches and field stone walls, are not cohesive with the design and materials used elsewhere at the World War II Memorial. Importantly, the proposed design for the prayer plaque also includes improvements to the Circle of Remembrance to better align the design, material, and character with the rest of the memorial. Next, I'll present the applicant's design plans organized by the following elements: the circle and plaque, the center of the circle, planting and lighting. So first, the circle and plaque. The applicant studied options for the bench, landscape wall, and plaque design. The options include alternative A, with entry pillars on either side of the plaque and refined bench details, and alternative B, with removed entry pillars so that the plaque appears to float, and benches that draw from the bench details used at the World War II Plaza. Here are our details for alternative A. The plaque spans between granite pillars. The circular wall incorporates two stone bands with benches anchoring the lower band. The benches are angled to relate to the angle of the wall, and the armrests align with the wall joints. Here are the details for alternative B. The plaque is supported by a dark metal frame from below so that it appears to float. The wall incorporates three stone bands with a center band corresponding to the benches. The bench profile draws from the World War II Plaza bench design, and the armrests are centered on the stone veneer. This view of alternative B shows how the plaque appears to float above the granite entry wall and that the reader has views to the Atlantic Arch. Staff supports alternative B for the bench wall and plaque design because it complements the World War II bench profile and elevates the plaque as a distinct feature within the Circle of Remembrance. This view of alternative B shows the floating plaque as well as the engraved inscription on the granite entry wall. Prominently located and visible to pedestrians entering this space, the inscription strengthens the identity of this less well-known component of the World War II Memorial. The prayer plaque itself is bronze metal with a dark background patina and raised gold lettering. It uses half-inch-sized text arranged in five columns following the curvature of the plaque with a star motif separating the introduction from the prayer. It also has a guilloch border, inspired by the Medal of Freedom border. Staff finds the plaque is appropriately scaled, oriented, and positioned for universal accessibility and legibility, and that the text layout adheres to the original intent and prayer format. Next, we'll look at the center of the circle. The applicant studied several options to enhance the center of the Circle of Remembrance and proposed elements that relate to the World War II Memorial using both granite and bronze, and some material precedents are shown here. The applicant studied both directional and non-directional designs for the center of the circle. The directional design, the Medal of Freedom medallion, draws from the medallions located at the Atlantic and Pacific arches and includes a standing female figure. For non-directional designs, the applicant studied olive wreaths, which symbolized the peace achieved after D-Day, and the prayer also mentions peace several times. Bronze rope, which is used at the World War II Memorial and signifies unity and binding the nation together, and gold stars, which reference the World War II Memorial's Freedom Wall and stars given to family members of World War II casualties. Here you see plans for the center of the circle showing options one and two. At left is option one, the Medal of Freedom medallion, at six feet in diameter and oriented to face visitors entering the circle. At right is option two, the bronze olive branches and five gold stars included as a band of elements surrounding a circle of textured granite. At their May meeting, the CFA approved a combination of both option one and option two. And staff notes the NICMAC provided a variety of comments, many of which supported a central element but suggested a simple, non-directional design. In general, staff supports enhancing the Circle of Remembrance with a central element. Overall, the materials, particularly the granite and bronze, are cohesive with the materials used within the World War II Memorial precinct. So next, I'll discuss the planting plan. The proposed plan incorporates low-maintenance vegetation that promotes long-term legibility of the plaque. Additionally, white blooming vegetation adheres to the original planting concept for the Circle of Remembrance, with white symbolizing remembrance and peace. The plan includes adding a multi-stem tree to balance the composition and frame the circle and maintain views to Constitution gardens. Here is a view into the circle showing the additional tree and low ground cover at the entry. Lastly, I'll discuss lighting. The proposed lighting plan utilizes existing site safety lighting and proposes new lighting beneath the stone benches to provide ambient lighting to read the plaque at night. Here is a nighttime rendering showing the lighting beneath the stone benches. And this view shows the existing site safety lighting to the right. Staff notes that in the future, the Park Service may consider additional accent lighting, if needed, to adequately read the plaque at night, and requests that the Park Service consult with NCPC staff on any additional accent lighting, if needed. It is the executive director's recommendation that the commission approves the preliminary and final site development plans for the President Franklin D. Roosevelt Prayer Plaque, supports the proposed design because it improves the Circle of Remembrance and harmonizes its character with the World War II Memorial and prominently locates an appropriately scaled and clearly legible plaque and enhances the center of the circle, supports alternative B for the bench wall and plaque design, and notes the Park Service may consider additional accent lighting to read the plaque at night and requests consultation with NCPC staff if additional lighting is needed. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. Here with us, we also have Holly Rotandi, Executive Director of the Friends of the National World War II Memorial, and Carol Lamahan, an associate with Oom Von Sweden Landscape Architects.
Thank you, Ms. Dowker. Excuse me. Do the commissioners have any questions? I'm now going to open it up to the commission for discussion. I'll start with Commissioner May and then go in a round robin format using our normal seating order. So please keep your webcams on during the discussion. And Commissioner May?
So for, I thought that we might have other speakers also as well from the park or from the partner?
Ms. Dowker, would any of our speakers care to present to the commission? I think they were certainly in attendance if we had questions. Are there specific questions, Commissioner May, you would like for them to address?
No.
Or just give them an opportunity to speak?
Yeah, I was under the impression that they were going to make short statements, both the partner and the Park Service superintendent. Maybe I misunderstood that, but that's what I had been told coming into this.
I was not aware that either the Park Service superintendent or the Friends desired to make statements.
Okay. Well, just out of courtesy, would you mind if Arvin Manocha had the opportunity just to speak briefly?
I think he's with the Wolf Trap Project, correct?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes. Yeah, so this is actually Catherine Dewey and Holly.
That was a mistake. I'm sorry. I got my projects mixed up. I got too many of them. So, no, this is a terrific project. I'm glad that we're finally moving forward with it and that everything that's in the the staff report is all very positive. So I'm pleased that we're getting to a final approval for this project that turned out to be a very lengthy endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner May. Commissioner Argo?
The only thing I'd like to say is it's lovely. And additionally, I would certainly support the idea of determining additional night lighting. When, I know personally, you know, most of the time when I take visitors down to the mall, it ends up, especially in the summer, it ends up being a night. So it would be a lovely enhancement for a beautiful memorial. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright? Commissioner Wright, any comments or questions?
I'm here. I'm struggling. I commented at NICMAC, so I won't go on and on. I also thought alternative B was better. I'm still, I have two things that are still bugging me about this thing. The, you know, I understand the shape of the plaque determines the layout of the type. But at NICMAC, we saw, I believe, there was a six-column version and a five-column version. And I just, I don't think either one of them are quite there, quite successful. And I just wonder, and I know the design intent, to reinforce the circle. But I just wonder if, this is a rhetorical, I'm not expecting an answer. I just wonder if, and I'm sure you did, explore a rectangular plaque which would require less contortion on the type on top of the same pedestal, the same curvilinear pedestal. Just a thought, because I know you're still struggling with that. I didn't find either one of the layouts for the plaque without its awkward moments. So I just wonder if that can, if you looked at it, again, you don't have to answer me because I know you're very far into this. And the second piece is about that center medallion. I feel really strongly about that, that there's already iconographic overload at the World War II Memorial, and adding more of it is just more. And we all know sometimes less is more. I just, yeah, mark it with a decorative border and call it a day. It's just too much. There's too much to look at, and then you get this weird what direction the imagery is laid out and all of that. And yet all can be avoided in the interest of simplicity. So otherwise, that's it. I think it's lovely. Those are my only two trouble spots, and neither one of them are showstoppers.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. I know you weren't looking for a response, but Ms. Dowker, did you want to give a response in terms of how the typeface was considered?
Of course. I know the applicant studied, as Ms. Wright suggested, a linear layout of the text on a curved plaque. However, in consultation with CFA staff and our own, there were awkward moments with that layout as well, particularly as the linear text meets the curved edges of the curved plaque. So that was looked at, and the applicant moved forward with the curved text layout in both the five and six columns. I believe CFA at their May meeting commented favorably on the proposed layout with the five-column text and the larger font.
What I'm talking about, though, is not a curved plaque. That's what I'm saying. It's impossible to lay out the type on a plaque that has a curvilinear edge without any awkward moments. I just, it's, I think it's almost impossible to do. And it's a sacrifice that can be made. I get it. It's, do we care more about the design of the actual plaque and the type? Or do we care more about the overall composition? And there's no doubt that the curved plaque is better for the overall composition. It's just, it's five or six columns, meh. I mean, both, neither one, I thought, were yet perfect, but I guess perfect is, you know, in this case, the enemy of the good, which is why I wasn't looking for an answer. But thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Dixon?
I have no comment.
Commissioner May, I'm so sorry, Commissioner Dixon. I looked down for a moment. You wanted to make a comment?
Yeah, I'd like to answer the non-answerable questions.
Awesome.
Commissioner Wright didn't actually want an answer, but I can't resist. What can I say?
Of course you can't.
I know. We did look at many, many different arrangements for the plaque early in the design process, and we did look at plaques that were more rectangular in configuration and made more sense from that perspective. And of course, we did look, you know, at what Ms. Dowker described. And it is a very difficult design challenge. And, you know, we wound up, I think, with something And I, you know, we wound up, I think, with something that is workable, but at this moment is very hard to represent very well in, you know, with the tools that we have at our disposal. I expect that there may be some tweaking to the lineup or the, the actual layout of the text as we, you know, get closer to the casting process. But I, I honestly don't expect that we would move away from that, the curved type and the, the the column layout as, as the Commission is hopefully about to approve. But I, you know, I just want to reassure Ms. Wright that we did look at a lot of different options for how the plaque might be placed and how the text might be read.
I assumed you did.
Yes.
Which is why I didn't look for an answer. It was just.
You know, you raised the question. I wanted to reassure the rest of the Commission.
And, and I think it's worthy of, of reviewing that again. And I think as Commissioner Wright said, it's not a showstopper, but it is something that I think needs to be understood why the decisions were made. So thank you, Commissioner May.
With, with regard to the medallion, I, I will say that it was not our first choice to have both the medallion and the, the wreath in bronze in that location. And I think we'd prefer not to have the medallion at this moment. You know, we have that approval for the Commission of Fine Arts and we are content with moving forward the process. But it may well be that in the end, both are not achievable, given the budget that we have for the project. So we'll, we'll have to see. We may wind up having to come back and show an alternative that eliminates the medallion. But we will just have to see.
That would be a welcome change.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So Commissioner Dixon?
Staff, good work. Thank you. I have no comments.
And has Commissioner Cash joined us, Ms. Coster?
No, he has not.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Davis?
I appreciated hearing about the project and I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Davenport?
As what I can assume is the only Commissioner who took his now wife on their first date to the World War Two Memorial. I obviously think the memorial is perfect as is, but it's good to see this project. Or, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Trueblood?
Nope. No comment. Thank you.
Commissioner McMahon?
A very nice project and I was happy to participate both today and then discussions and also with NCMAC. I have no other comments.
Thank you. And, and I would just like to add, I'm, I'm particularly pleased with the universal accessibility at the site. And I do think enhanced lighting in the evening is going to make it a richer experience. So thank you for the good work, Ms. Dowker, of you and the staff. Is there a motion to approve the, the final guidelines here?
I would move approval of the EDR.
Thank you, Commissioner May. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Whoops. Thank you, Commissioner Argo. Ms. Coster, can you please confirm the motion and the second and take the vote by roll call?
Certainly. The motion was made by Commissioner May. The second was by Commissioner Argo. Commissioner Trueblood?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright? Commissioner Wright?
Yes, sorry.
That's okay. Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Abstain.
All right. And Commissioner Davenport?
Abstain.
Even with the date comment, shoot. Sorry, little editorial there. Approved with two abstentions.
Thank you. The motion is carried. Next is Agenda Item 7B, Approval of Comments on the Goddard Space Flight Center Draft Master Plan. And we have with us Mr. Hart.
Hello, I hope everyone can hear and see me.
Yes, thank you.
Excellent. So, good afternoon, Madam Vice Chair and members of the Commission. The National Aeronautics and Space Administration has submitted a draft campus master plan at the Goddard Space Flight Center for the Commission's review and comment. The Commission last approved the Goddard Space Flight Center Master Plan in 2003. The Commission's review of draft master plans focuses on a few concerns that are shown here. They revolve around land use, transportation, environmental protection, as well as historic preservation. And there are a number of questions that you see here that we ask when reviewing these draft master plans. So the Goddard Space Flight Center has, as an agency, has a vision statement that is to develop sustainable campuses with resilient facilities and infrastructure that accommodate NASA's mission needs and requirements promoting collaboration and excellence in scientific discoveries. As an agency, the Goddard Space Flight, excuse me, Flite, I have a hard time with this. Goddard Space Flight Center oversees various locations identified on this map, including the Greenbelt Campus, which you see here highlighted in orange. These other areas are indicated with red dots and they're on the Virginia's, Virginia's eastern shore in New York City, in West Virginia and New Mexico. The Space Flight Center's organizational chart is shown here. It includes three directorates and six lines of business. So the applicant has submitted a master plan for the Greenbelt Campus. In this presentation, I'll first discuss the existing conditions and then describe the proposed development identified in the master plan and integrate staff's analysis as well as our recommendations. So the Space Flight Center is located in Prince George's County. And it's just outside the Capitol Beltway and just east of 295 and north of Route 193, which is a state route, also known as Greenbelt Road. The campus is composed of the main campus and four separate areas numbered one through, excuse me, 100 through 400, which are shown here. This campus is just under 1,300 acres with 4.11 million square feet of facilities and 8,300 employees. And what you see in the, in the background here is an actual view of the campus. This is actually looking southward. The campus size has changed over the years. Here's a graphic showing the expansion since it was first founded over 50 years ago. This topographic map is to demonstrate where the higher elevations are on the campus, including, generally speaking, the higher elevations are here on the main campus. And the decrease in elevation as they move towards the north, which are basically stream valleys north of the, of the facility. The existing transportation network is shown on this map. And I'll point out a few items. The main gate is currently at, located here at the intersection of Goddard Road and Greenbelt Road. There are four other gates, the Parkway Gate, the North Gate, the Shipping and Receiving Gate, and the South Gate. These are, these gates are primarily used by employees. There is a Ring Road, which is Explorer Road. There's also a public road that, that cuts through the, a part of the campus on the east side. This is Soil Conservation Route. And as you see in this image, there is quite a bit of vegetation on the campus with wooded areas surrounding a, a good portion of the campus, the main campus. There are wetlands on the site as indicated on this map, as well as concert, tree, excuse me, forest conservation areas, which are these hatched areas. And most of the, the central portion of the site is lawn or, you know, or a lawn area. Moving to historic resources on the campus, there is a National Register Eligible Historic District on the campus that's outlined here in purple, as well as a National Historic Landmark, which is here in the Area 300 and an Archaeological Resource Area as well. Building 305, which is the spacecraft magnetic test facility, was built in 1966 and was designated a National Historic Landmark in 1985. The building is a single-story structure and it's built entirely out of non-magnetic materials and houses a magnetic coil system which allows it to cancel Earth's magnetic field. This is important because it is the only facility in NASA's inventory that permits scientists to evaluate a spacecraft's own magnetic field, which can affect its movement and measurement in space. In 2012, a stone slab with a 100 million year old fossil was found. As a result of this find, this area was designated an Archaeological Resource Area, and that's highlighted here. This slab that was found is eight feet by three feet and it is imprinted with 70 animal tracks of eight different species. It's considered a rare find as the footprints of this many species are not normally found in a concentration such as this. No other significant archaeological findings were identified in this site. The next few slides will describe the building's age, use and condition, which is based on a building survey conducted by the applicant. This slide shows the age of each building. Most of the buildings in this central area were built in the 1960s, which makes sense because this is where the historic district is proposed. Here's the building conditions map. The buildings in the, in the best condition are identified in green. The fair condition, those in fair condition are, are shown in yellow and the poor condition buildings are in the darker orange. Finally, this is, this map is showing the building uses. The predominant use on the campus is for lab office space, with remaining buildings used for office, warehouse, community and installation support. There are some hazardous materials on the site as well. Here we have two items to point out. The first, there are four debris-filled areas, A1, A2, B and C. And these areas cannot have any residential or daycare facilities placed on them. There's also a trichoralethylene plume that is actually in the aquifer, about 70 or 80 feet below the ground. The trichoralethylene or TCE is a clear colorless, non-flammable liquid with a sweet smell used in, used as an industrial solvent. And I'll note that this plume can be built, built upon, but needs to be monitored and the NASA is continuing to, to monitor it. So taking all of this into consideration, the applicant produced an opportunities and constraints map. It includes areas to avoid, such as forest conservation areas, steep slopes and wetlands and potential development areas. We're primarily in this central portion of the campus, which is already a disturbed area and built-up area. So this brings us to the draft master plan. This master plan will be effective from, from now until the year 2037. So the Greenbelt Campus itself has, has a vision statement, and that is to create a sustainable, walkable and brilliant, excuse me, and vibrant campus comprised of modern adaptable facilities within a natural setting. And here we have the draft master plan and I'm really only showing the main campus, not areas 300, 400, 100 or 200. And this is because the majority of the change is really happening at these, at this, this area. This master plan includes a few changes and I'll, I'll just kind of step through them. The first is creating a linear pedestrian zone in the main campus that will be defined by these new and existing buildings that's indicated here. The relocation of the main entrance from Goddard Road, which it is currently, to ISAT Road, which is here to the east. And this is primarily because there is a visitor center that is located here and this entrance will be in close proximity to that for visitors to access before getting access to the, to the site itself. I'll note that there, that most of the parking will be located around this main pedestrian zone. There will also be a decrease in the building inventory. And the, the applicant is wishing to maintain a natural setting for the, for the site. So staff supports the, the applicant's vision statement and supports, generally supports the draft master plan, which seeks to improve the campus by incorporating the reorganization of the main campus around a linear pedestrian zone framed by new and renovated buildings in the central portion of the campus. The reorientation of the main entrance to ISAT Road near the new visitor center. The addition of walkways, bicycle lanes, sidewalks and multi-use pathways on the campus. And the addition of street trees throughout the roadway network. And I'll talk about these items later on in the presentation. Just looking at a summary of the development plan. In summary, they're proposing to move from 4.11 million square feet to 3.05 million square feet for an overall reduction of about 26%, which is a fairly significant change. In addition to the reduction of the buildings and the development on the site, the applicant is proposing the divestment of Area 400, which is a 100 acre mainly forested parcel that the applicant states that no longer is, is needing. The Patuxent Wildlife Refuge is just to the northeast of this site across Springfield Road. And the parcel is also next to the Beltsville Agricultural Research Center, which you are, you are aware of. Here we have the breakdown of the development plan, showing the buildings to be retained, constructed and restored. And again, these are primarily in this central portion of the, of the main campus. And this plan shows the building slated for demolition. The draft master plan identifies a National Register Eligible Historic District on this, on the main campus in the same location as where this new development is being proposed. And this will, will require the removal of a number of buildings, which are identified here. Staff is not clear which, what mitigation is being proposed for the removal of historic buildings within the National Register Eligible Historic District, which is outlined here in purple. We would therefore like to understand the mitigation to be proposed for these buildings and request additional information on the, on this mitigation as part of the Section 106 consultation process with the Maryland Historic Trust. The master plan also details what development of these, these core buildings will be in the linear pedestrian zone. And these, this area is shown here. The draft master plan also provides some detail regarding what buildings along this linear zone would look like. The buildings shown here are existing buildings on the campus, which are the, the buildings of the, the center and the left side of the slide. On the right-hand side are what the buildings may look like that are proposed in the future. They've also provided specific building typologies for office, combination lab office, as well as community buildings on campus, which you see here is a prototype for office buildings. Staff supports including these descriptions. And because the Commission has recently focused on rooftop elements like photovoltaic systems as well as antennas, we recommend that the building typologies also incorporate guidance for the placement of rooftop solar panels and/or antennas. The draft master plan also includes some changes to the roadway network. And this is not really about realignment, but an enhancement of the roadways with adding pedestrian and bicycle amenities. The other main changes will be the consolidation of parking outside of this main, this main linear pedestrian zone. The draft master plan has a draft transportation management plan as well, which included the existing and proposed mode splits for the installation. And these mode splits are shown on this table. So when the study was conducted in 2016, the existing mode splits, mode split included 89% single occupancy vehicle rate, which is highlighted here. And the 2037 mode split is actually reduced to 47% SOV, single occupancy vehicles. Staff supports this decrease in SOV rate, which would result from the change in the number of teleworking employees, which is increasing from 0.4% to 40% in 2037. And this is a fairly significant change. The draft TMP also includes the existing and proposed parking ratio. The Goddard Space Flight Center existing parking ratio is one space for 1.19 employees. And it is And it is, it is proposing a one space, one space to 1.3 parking ratio for 2037. The NCPC Comprehensive Plan Parking Ratio is 1 to 2 for facilities in the environs not near a metro station. I'll also note here that the draft master plan is proposing a reduction in the, the number of parking spaces on campus by 600 spaces approximately. The TDM, there are some TDM strategies that are included in the TMP. And these are shown here, and we do support these. And we, we support these because, among other things, they seek to increase teleworking. They include the designation of a employee transportation coordinator. They promote alternatives to commuting by single occupancy vehicle, and they advocate for off-campus transportation projects benefiting non-SOV modes. Taking all of this into account, we have some concerns regarding the parking ratio. This master plan, as noted, is not consistent with the NCPC's comp plan, 1 to 2 parking ratio. The parking, amount of parking is not being significantly reduced, although the number of commuting employees is expected to decrease. And the TMP does not include incremental steps to demonstrate how it will meet the parking ratio in 2037. And therefore, staff notes that since there is an abundance of surface parking that equates to almost a one space for every employee, and the number of employees is going to remain constant, we recommend that the applicant develop specific parking ratio targets in two-year increments in their TMP that would include viable strategies to allow them to meet the 1 to 2 parking ratio goal. So, looking at parking, the surface parking itself, regarding the amount of parking on the campus, while staff supports the proposed linear pedestrian zone that you see here on the, on the right-hand side, we question the changes in parking lot configurations included in the draft master plan. Since the, since this master plan is not meeting the, the comprehensive plan 1 to 2 parking ratio, and fewer employees are anticipated to arrive at the site, we do not believe new parking areas should be developed. However, since it's not clear how the overall parking supply is changing, we recommend that the applicant provide a parking plan that identifies and describes the existing amount of parking and the amount of parking to be added and removed on the campus. In addition, there seems to be an opportunity to include parking lot design standards describing how they will be developed. Therefore, staff also requests that the applicant develop surface parking lot standards and guidelines that will demonstrate how it will integrate stormwater management facilities, sustainable features such as solar panels and electrical charging stations, and pathways for pedestrian safety. So here is the vehicular and pedestrian and bicycle routes through the, through and around the installation that are included in the, in the draft master plan. This is important because the TMP includes strategies to reduce S, single occupancy vehicles by increasing biking and walking. And the master plan includes the addition of pedestrian and bicycle amenities to the existing roadway network. You see a photograph of the roadway network here on the right, and this is what they're proposing in the master plan, which includes a dedicated bike path, as well as a, excuse me, a bike lane, as well as a sidewalk for these, these primary roads. There's also the creation of new walkways, trails, and multi-use paths on the campus. And they're shown, diagrams of them are shown here. Staff supports these changes while, which seek to improve the access to the campus for non-motorized travel. And finally, we see the proposed green space network. It consists of a hierarchy of green spaces from primary green spaces that are part of the linear pedestrian zone, which is this area that's here, to secondary spaces, which are just off that area here, and finally, naturalized and wooded spaces that are surrounding this site. And here we see examples of that primary, secondary, and naturalized areas, what they might look like. And staff found this information to be very helpful. However, we didn't seem to, there didn't seem to be much information on stormwater management, impervious surface area change, or energy reduction in the master plan. And therefore, staff requests that the applicant provide more detail about this information with the, the final master plan. The draft master plan also recognizes the need to preserve and enhance tree canopy. The master plan should include information regarding which areas would be preserved and how to, how to determine which trees will be removed. On this slide is an example of one area that, that places a building on an area that was once apart, once had existing trees. And unfortunately, there isn't a description of these existing trees or what will be done to replace them. And therefore, staff just requests the applicant provide a tree replacement plan for the campus in accordance with NCPC policy. And finally, staff referred the project to the Maryland Clearinghouse, the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission, as well as the City of Greenbelt in January of this year. We did receive comments from all of these agencies. The Maryland State Agencies noted that the project would be consistent with their plans. Several noted, several agencies noted that further consultation would be necessary, specifically the Maryland Historic Trust, as well as the Maryland Department of the Environment. The Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission provided its comments, which were generally favorable. However, it noted the need for further coordination on the pedestrian and bicycle connections from off-site onto the campus. And then finally, there were comments from the City of Greenbelt and representatives here today to provide some public testimony. They support the master plan and noted several items they believe needed to be addressed. They noted that Area 400 should be transferred to the Patuxent Wildlife Refuge rather than to GSA, which may develop this undeveloped parcel. They were also looking for additional information regarding the National Register Eligible District that's on campus. Some further information about the tree canopy, excuse me, tree canopy impacts that they felt should be strongly considered when new buildings were developed. They discussed sustainability goals that needed to be specifically identified. And finally, they noted connections to off-site areas for pedestrians and bicycles should be described more fully. And with that, I'll note that I've already incorporated the Executive Director's recommendation into my presentation, and I will conclude my presentation. I am available to answer any questions. And we have some representatives from the, from NASA Goddard Space Flight Center that are here to answer questions as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Are there any questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner May, and then Commissioner Wright.
Yeah, my question is about parking. And I'll more to say later when we discuss it, but the question is, is there, has the, the applicant done any sort of study of the existing parking utilization, given the very high number of spaces that they have?
They have done some of that. They did understand that some of the issues with parking were that the parking was just kind of dispersed throughout the installation currently. And so people were parking in, there were some areas that were parked. I guess there was more parking that was happening than, than, than in other areas, which is also why they want to concentrate the parking in that, that kind of pedestrian zone. They want to kind of move some of the parking there. But it wasn't that clear how much parking that they were, how much parking they were getting rid of and moving, how much parking they were getting rid of altogether. It was just, I think a little bit more information would be helpful for us to fully understand all of that.
Right. Yeah, I would venture a guess that the actual utilization is, you know, isn't close to what one would want for that kind of investment in having and maintaining that number of parking spaces. I mean, I would be very surprised if they were, you know, in the 80 or 90% terms of utilization. I would expect it to be much less than that, given that it's a very large operation and given that they're, I'm sure there are significant numbers of people who are there at all hours of the day. So I expect their utilization to be much lower, and I think that would be helpful information as we continue to evaluate this master plan. Anyway, we'll talk more about that in a minute.
Thank you, Commissioner May. Commissioner Wright, you had a question?
I did. I, it was about the, I, I missed this, I, I missed it in the EDR that there's, where is this business of, of, of disposing of Area 400 to GSA? I know, I don't know anything about that. Can someone speak to that, that it's addressed in the testimony?
Yeah, Commissioner Wright, the, the property is, I guess it's a property that they just felt that NASA felt that they either would, they don't really need to use that parcel. So they were thinking either they could have it as a, an area that doesn't have, they would demolish the buildings on, on this, on the site. So either it would be an area that would go back to a natural state or possibly go to GSA for disposal, and
Is that in the EDR? I, I just missed it.
Yeah, it's, they, they, it's in the letter that, that the, that Greenbelt submitted.
Right, okay.
And it's been more of a, of a, I think, a question in the last few days.
This is just a conversation that's been taking place about disposal of this parcel. It's nothing, there's no, there's no, there's no action underway. It's just a thought bubble right now.
They, the, and NASA is, has included in their master plan that they would be divesting their, the interest in that as, as one possibility. There's also the possibility of it being used as a natural, you know, going back to its natural state, and they retaining the, the ownership of it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. And I, I was going to ask a similar question. Have conversations taken place after seeing the letter from Greenbelt? And I know we're going to hear from Ms. Porter. So that would be a question I would have, whether there has been a conversation with the folks who manage the refuge. And from my own personal perspective, anytime you can expand a wildlife refuge, that should be seriously considered. So I thought it was a very intriguing idea, and I'd like to hear more about that as well. Are there other questions from the commissioners?
Vice Chair White, would you like to hear from the, from NASA?
I, I think that would be great, and I have an additional question. But sure, that would be wonderful. I could give you my question now, and they could answer both at the same time.
Well, that, that would be fine, you can. And I think it's, I'm not sure if it's going to be Ms. Pete or Mr. Ramon that would be responding to this, but I think one of them should be able to, to provide you at least with some information as to where they are right now.
Right. So in addition to the refuge idea, I was curious, along the lines of Commissioner May's questions about the parking plan, and you showed the commuter mode split and the projections for 2037. And I thought was really intriguing how much the single, single occupancy vehicle went down. But I'm curious when those projections were made, and have they been updated since the, we've been living with the pandemic and working remotely, and people are finding a different way to work? So I'm just curious, has the experience during the pandemic affected that projection? In addition to the question about utilization of existing parking spaces, if the number of employees will stay the same? So those are my two questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner White, and thank you, Mr. Hart. My name is Brother Ramon. I'm the head of the planning branch of Goddard Space Flight Center. So thank you for the opportunity to, to address your questions. Regarding the projections in terms of our stats in the transportation management plan, they're actually were made, I want to say, within the last year. Having said that, and I think we have communicated that to Mr. Hart, that the agency obviously is looking to put a policy in place associated to, I'm going to call it the new way of work. So they kind of like, the, the new norm, put it that way. So definitely, what the agency actually has told us is that we want to go ahead and establish some pilot projects associated to, you know, how are we going to do something like a hotel in concept, right? In terms of having a dedicated workspace assigned to, to each of the employees. So implementing that within the next six months, next year, will give them the data to the agency to pretty much do a lessons learned and come up with a policy that then in turn, we're going to apply, obviously, to our strategy, the way we are designing and building the new buildings on center. So, so yes, we haven't taken that into consideration. Just real quick, go back to Area 400. There's been no decisions, like, like Mr. Hart said, we're still in discussions. We definitely entertain all the possibilities. We agree with the City of Greenbelt that that's a good idea. So, so it's not hincu and stone. We, we definitely, this is the time to kind of do an evaluation and assessment of all the options that we have in play, definitely.
Thank you so much.
Sure, absolutely.
And, and Mr. Ramon, if you could talk a little bit about the utilization of parking on the, on the campus? Mr. Commissioner May asked about that. I recall something, some information in the master plan about it, but I think you may have a better handle on that.
Yes, and I'm going to give you a kind of a general answer, and I'm going to let my master planner, who's Ali Pete, she's more familiar with the, with the, with the numbers. But just like you mentioned, and for Mr. May, we have a spread campus. And when the campus was developed in the early 60s, kind of like the, the thought process obviously was having a parking space next to the building. And then as we transitioned, right, and we have modernized at one point in time, we have shuttles within, within the, within the site that, that helps, kind of like that movement of folks. We have narrowed down the allocation of parking spaces on a building-by-building basis. So I want to say the last office, office building that we built, I want to say, two or three years ago, our ratio for that building was about, don't quote me, about 0.7, 0.75, something like that. So significantly less than the overall average. So that's kind of the thought process moving forward. Ali, if you want to ask something that you think I missed, feel free to do so, please.
Hello, everybody. Ali Pete, nice to see all of you. So the parking utilization, I'll just, there's, there's a couple of things. There's, there was a study that's referenced in the TMP that talks about looking at parking and, over the course of a day, and, and how the, the parking utilization. Essentially, it shows that people drive around the campus throughout the day. So they might park in one spot and then relocate to another spot based on a meeting in one building over here and a meeting, another meeting over here. So there's that sort of park, parking utilization that we've looked at from that perspective. And that's sort of in addition to the parking utilization you're talking about, about like the, the ratio of the one to, the one, the current ratio, 1 to 1.9, and then our projected ratio of 1 to 1.3. So I'll just, I'll just start with that. Does that, is that kind of what you're getting at, the, when you talk, ask about parking utilization?
What I'm trying to find out is at any given moment, how many spaces are actually occupied? And, you know, whether it's because people are moving around or relationship to building, none of that matters to me, just in gross terms. You've got, you know, 6,000 parking spaces or whatever it is. How many of them are actually filled at any given moment? And I know it's not just a matter of doing a single inventory. It's something where you'd have to count cars over a period of time. But, you know, that's, that can be done.
Right, and, and okay, I understand what you're asking. The most recent parking utilization analysis was, we did in 2016, and that was looking at parking over the course of a day. And that study indicated 50, 55% to 92% utilization rate during working hours between 10:00 AM and 2:30 PM. So it, that's kind of a, looking at some of the key main lots on the center.
And the variability of 50 to 92, does that mean that some lots are at 92 and some are at 50? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, because it, yes, over the course of the day, the, the lots had different utilization rates, yes.
And is there an aggregate number? I mean, did you add up all of the parking spaces and all of the utilizations to come up with a single number that says that it's, you know, on a given day, it's 70% occupied or something like that?
I don't believe I have that.
Okay, because I think that would be a helpful number to know.
Okay.
And it's just, it's really just a matter of math if you have the inventory. It also has probably changed a bit since 2016 and is likely to change in the future. But you know, I'll leave the projections for future analysis, I guess.
So. Commissioner May, we can follow with that absolutely in terms of.
No, I mean, I expect, this is just, this is just information I think that we'll need next time around, right?
Okay.
Thank you, and I do think it's an important question to understand because it gives us the base of what your needs are now. So we can understand what the plans are. So thank you for that information. Are there any other questions from the commissioners? Hearing none? I'm sorry?
I, I just wanted to, did I miss this? How far is this facility from the Greenbelt Metro?
It's several miles from the Greenbelt Metro. I think it's like three or four miles from it.
Yes.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's actually, I think, closer to Greenbelt than it is to New Carrollton Metro, but they're both at least three or four miles away.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Argo. We do have one person signed up to speak. When I call your name, you may unmute, turn on your webcam and begin your testimony. First is Molly Porter from the city of Greenbelt. Ms. Porter, you will have five minutes to provide your testimony. And I think you know what our questions already are for you. So I'm sure you will address those as you give your testimony. Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. For the record, Molly Porter, community planner with the city of Greenbelt. I'm speaking on behalf of the Greenbelt City Council, which has reviewed and discussed the subject draft master plan and transportation management plan. The Greenbelt City Council has submitted a letter outlining concerns in areas that warrant further analysis within the plans. The city has a strong relationship with the NASA Goddard Space Flight Center Greenbelt Campus and has invested interest in the preservation of the center's natural and historical resources. The city appreciates the strong focus on sustainability within the plan, but there are areas of the draft master plan that raise concern. As discussed, the city is particularly concerned with the proposed divestment of Area 400. The city has a strong concern about the potential for this land being accessed to GSA, who would then be the lead on determining reuse. Area 400 is adjacent to the southernmost section of the Protective Research Refuge, the nation's only wildlife, national wildlife refuge established to support wildlife research. The acreage of Area 400 and any land to be divested that is in proximity to the refuge should be transferred to the Protective Research Refuge and returned to its natural vegetative state rather than be redeveloped. This action would be consistent with the objective and vision of the draft master plan. The draft master plan also identifies potential partnership areas. While significant detail about these areas are not known at this time, it is of critical importance that each partnership supports the mission of the center and not have adverse environmental impacts on the campus. Further detail is also needed regarding the impact the implementation this master plan would have on the National Register of Historic Places eligible district. The activities within these areas need to be carefully considered for long-term adverse impacts. The city strongly supports the proposed sustainability initiative areas to explore solar and/or geothermal opportunities. The city also strongly supports the identified goal to preserve and enhance existing urban trees and forest land. In general, the city would like to urge NASA to be more forward-thinking in their campus planning to ensure that existing and emerging technologies are utilized to effectively advance the identified sustainability goals, such as planning for zero energy buildings. With respect to the draft transportation management plan, the city supports the overall goal of reducing the use of single occupancy vehicles and believes that it is of critical importance that the implementation of these plans include bicycle and pedestrian connections to the campus from the surrounding area, including a connection between Northway Fields in the city and the Greenbelt Campus across the Baltimore-Washington Parkway. This important connection is identified in the city of Greenbelt Pedestrian and Bicycle Master Plan and noted in the draft transportation management plan. Plans for dedicated pedestrian and bicycle facilities along Greenbelt Road are also of critical importance. NASA Goddard should work with the Maryland State Highway Administration to provide pedestrian access to ISAT Road Gate. The city looks forward to collaborating with the center on these important projects. The city also encourages NASA to work with Prince George's County on the installation of a bike share station on campus and to work with the county and Womata on improving existing bus service to the campus to better suit the needs of Goddard Center employees. In addition to these comments, the city would also encourage NASA to incentivize the use of electric vehicles for those employees who continue to travel to campus using SOVs, such as by installing EV charging stations in parking lots throughout campus. In summary, the city continues to enthusiastically support the mission of the center and looks forward to continued collaboration. Thank you for this opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Ms. Porter. Are there any questions from the commissioners from Ms. Porter? Thank you. That concludes the public testimony on this project and I would like to thank everyone that shared their testimony with us. I'll now open it up to the commission for discussion, starting with Commissioner Argo and then go round robin using our normal seating order. So please keep your webcams on for the discussion and we will go to Commissioner Argo.
I have, I think most of the questions I had have been responded to in some way at this point. I think there's a lot of work that still needs to be done. I'm trying to think, was the, the one I had, I don't even remember exactly what the question was. The tree replacement plan? And I don't know, there was a tree, was there a tree replacement plan included in the presentation?
No, we, that was what we were looking for, just something to kind of describe this a little bit in some more detail. We kind of had some areas that were shown on the, on the, on the development plan that some buildings that were kind of taking the place of where some trees, existing trees were. And it just needed to be more detail on that. And you know, that's, that's something that we would get in the final master plan anyway. So it's something that would be helpful.
Right, well, I certainly support that. And I had, I think that we'll probably end up talking about all the other things that I had written down here, but was primarily concerned with the reduction in parking places and the tree replacement. And I think that was pretty much it. It looks like, my guess is we'll see this again several times. So I have no other comments at this point. Yeah, and I did, I did ask the question about the shuttle. Well, is there, is there any kind of a shuttle from Greenbelt Metro?
I'll ask if Ms. Pete or Mr. Ramon could answer. My understanding is that there, there are bus lines that go to the facility now that kind of, there's a bus kind of area that you can drop off. And there are also bus lines that go along Greenbelt Road that stop in front of the existing main entrance at Goddard and, Goddard Road and Greenbelt Road. And they're looking at having other stops that are along Greenbelt Road, which is the main route that connects to Greenbelt Metro Station. So there are bus lines that are there that, that will, I think they're both metro and Prince George's, the bus, that do that. But I'd like for Ms. Pete or Mr. Ramon to just verify that or to acknowledge whether or not that actually is the case.
Yes, yes, that is correct, Mr. Hart and Commissioner Argo. Yep, that's, that's, that's the way it is structured right now. And just to give you a little piece, a little bit of piece more information, we're in conversations right now with Womata because as Mr. Hart mentioned, one of the activities is going to be relocating our main gate from Goddard Road to ISAT Road. So we're in conversations with Womata to relocate one of their bus stops in Y-93 westbound to be closer to ISAT Road and you propose sidewalks and crosswalks to make it easier, to make it easier for public transportation to get into the center.
Would you mind bringing up the slide, Commissioner Hart, to show us the area that was just described?
I'm not actually a commissioner, but I can, I could look.
Oops, Mr. Hart. I just promoted you.
If we have slide number 23 would be helpful, Mr. Champ.
And while you're on the slide, if you could also just point out Area 400? So we can be reminded of that relationship.
Yeah, that's a little clearer.
Sure. So, so what we're looking at is, well, you're going to have to point this out because evidently I don't have the ability to do that. Or can I get control of that? Oh, there. So if you go down to the, towards Greenbelt Road, which is at the bottom of the slide here, and if you move over to the right, right there, that's ISAT Road. So that's the new entrance. If you go to the west or to the left of this, along Greenbelt Road, then you get to, keep on going, keep on going, and right about, nope, we went past it. It's right, right, a little over, a little farther to the right, there we go. So that's, that's the existing entrance, main entrance for, for the space, the Goddard Space Flight Center. So it's just moving to the east. I don't know how far that is. It's, looks like it's about 1,500, maybe 2,000 feet to the, to the east. And you wanted to have an image showing where Area 400 is with regard to this. If we could go to page slide 10, please. So you can see where that main campus here is and then where 400 is, which is basically off to the northeast of the, of the site. And currently it's a, I want to say almost 95% is forested of that, of that site. There's only a small portion of the site that's actually developed that has some buildings on it. But NASA has said that they're going to be removing those buildings as part of this, is through the master plan. And it's the question of what to do about it after those buildings are removed.
Thank you. Commissioner Argo, did you have any further questions? Hearing none, we will go to Commissioner Wright.
Sorry, no.
That's okay. Commissioner Wright.
No, I'm, I'm good. I think the EDR, Mr. Hart, you nailed it. All the, all the beefs I have with the plan are already noted. So we'll look forward to seeing it next time.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis.
Nothing for me, thanks.
Commissioner Davenport. Commissioner.
I'll agree with Commissioner Wright. I think most of my, my questions, which are, just to be clear, around parking, tree replacement and maybe the disposition, I think are all in the report. So I look forward to hearing more, more about those the next round.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon.
I concur with the other commissioners. I think the, it's a good report from the staff. I appreciate it and I think they fit the key issues, obviously, first of which is parking. It would seem that with the numbers they've got, that there's an opportunity to reduce parking and increase the amount of green space while they adapt the plan, which I think is, is great for walking on site. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dixon.
I have a question, it's fine. Lot of work in this. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner May.
My goodness, it reminds me when I'm muted. Yes, so I agree with everyone's support for the EDR. It hits all the critical points. I do want to focus for a second longer on the parking issue. Because, I mean, it just seems a little bit puzzling that at this moment where, you know, there is, you know, a pretty good sense of how the campus is going to change over the next 20 years and there's a pretty good sense of, or a pretty aggressive assumption about how many people will actually be working on site. And there is some understanding of the existing parking inventory, even if it's not exactly the number that I would want to see, that there isn't a more developed plan at this moment for how the agency will get to the one to two parking ratio. It seems to me that that would be not that hard to do. And it's just, it's just sort of puzzling that, that what's, what's being proposed is just, or what's in the plan right now is just this tiny little change in the parking ratio. I, I'm, it's sort of, I'm just really puzzled about it. And I think that this is, I mean, you know, I went to online to see what I could find just as I'm, because I can do that here from, and tried to see, you know, what does it look like now? Interestingly enough, from space, when you look at the Goddard Space Flight Center, right? And when you look at it from space right now, it must be a 2021 picture because it looks like about 10% of the parking spaces are filled. And I'm not gifted enough to look at, you know, the earlier versions of, you know, that imagery. I'm sure it's available. But it, you know, I have to believe that there's not the utilization that justifies that number of parking spaces. And I am just hopeful that this will be examined and examined aggressively. And I would venture to say that at 40% telework, I would think that the agency could do better than even the one to one, sorry, the one to two ratio. I mean, if you're assuming that number of people teleworking at any given moment, you know, one to two is, is a, is a cinch. See how much further you can go because, you know, that's just the floor, it's not the ceiling. So I think that that's an area for significant further investigation as the, as the plan develops. I would also say that the notion that people have to get into their cars to drive from building to building to go to meetings is also not the preferred model. Maybe there needs to be a shuttle of some sort within the campus so that people don't have to do that. Maybe there, you know, at that point, there are some sort of electric vehicles that can be used for that purpose to get people around. Maybe they need an internal bike share system, I don't know. But there are much better ways to get around within a large campus like this than having people get into their personal vehicles and drive from one side of the campus to another. So I think it's also worth studying. All right, I'm going to stop. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Commissioner May. Commissioner Wright, I see you have your hand up.
Yes, I forgot. I did want to say one word of caution about this whole building typology chart. Proceed with caution and don't, I, I mean, it's a good idea to have a design language that you're trying to hew towards, but, but it could easily become a set of handcuffs if, if implemented with too much force and you could get a big bucket of vanilla and foreclose on all kinds of opportunities for innovation. So I would give your design teams the leeway, present these typologies as guidance, but not force adherence to them, lest you lose out on some, some new language that is contextual, but. but expands the design vocabulary of the campus.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. If there are no other comments, I would just like to ask if we could just at least hear a report back from the staff in terms of any conversations about the disposition of Area 400. I, like I said, I think that's a really interesting opportunity and question, and it, it sounds like, you know, a lot of interest, but perhaps not conversations to date. But it would be, it would be of great interest to myself and perhaps other commissioners to, to hear back on where that goes.
Yes, and I, I should add, I have since come to an understanding from our disposal people that once it's declared excess, it would be taken through a process. NASA or NCPC wouldn't really have a say in it once it's declared excess. So that initial move is really important. And I, I, I think I, I need to be agnostic in my role as Commissioner for, or representing GSA, but I would also urge very careful thought about disposal.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner Wright. And I don't know if we need to do anything formal in that regard, but I think given our policies around green space and trees and making sure we're, we're making best use of our campus planning and reducing impervious surfaces. And perhaps Commissioner May, you have some thoughts about how this item could be explored with the Department of Interior? But again, from, from my perspective, and of course, that's from my, my role here in Houston and looking at preserving and protecting and enhancing green space. It is, just seems like a pretty unique opportunity that should at least be explored. So if you have any suggestions on that end, I'd love to hear them.
Not very specific suggestions. I do have a question. I mean, my recollection of the GSA disposal process is that once it's been identified as access to the needs of the agency, then a notice goes out to the agency, to agencies who might be interested in acquiring that property.
Yes, that, that would be the first step. It first gets offered to other feds and then goes through, you know, the homeless, public benefit, conveyance process. Yes. So the Park Service would have, would have a crack at it, but, but I'm simply saying that it could be preserved as is, as part of the site without undergoing that for, you know,
Got it.
Wildlife.
Right. So, I mean, the one thing I can do is make sure that Fish and Wildlife Services are aware that this property may wind up going through that disposal process to make sure that they're, you know, they can assess. And then there's no reason why they, I would think that they couldn't look at that in advance to determine whether they, you know, whether they are prepared to take that on. Because there's, you know, the, yeah, there's certainly value in preserving land. There are also burdens associated with taking on responsibility for more land. So.
Of course. And I'm sure they'd have to do an assessment of the wildlife value and the conservation value, but without a doubt. But I would just hate to foreclose that opportunity before they've had a chance to take a look at it.
Yeah.
So thank you.
We'll make sure they're aware.
Thank you. That's great. Appreciate that. So if there are no further comments or questions, is there a motion to approve the final guidelines?
So moved. This is Commissioner Wright.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon. Ms. Costa, can you please confirm the motion in the second and take the vote by roll call?
Certainly. The motion was made by Commissioner Wright. It's seconded by Commissioner Dixon. Commissioner Trueblood.
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon.
Yes.
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Commissioner Argo.
Yes.
Vice Chair White.
Yes.
Commissioner Wright.
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Abstain.
And Commissioner Davenport.
Abstain.
Right, with two abstentions, the motion is approved.
Thank you. Next is Agenda Item 7C, Approval of Comments on the Wolf Trap National Park for the Performing Arts General Management Plan Amendment. And here to present is Ms. Free.
Hi, thank you. Can you see my screen and hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Well, good afternoon, Commissioners. The National Park Service in partnership with the Wolf Trap Foundation has submitted concept, a concept master plan for the Wolf Trap National Park for the Performing Arts, which is located in Fairfax County, Virginia, for the Commission's comment. The Wolf Trap National Park for the Performing Arts is a 130-acre park located on former farmland, approximately 15 miles west of Washington, DC. The park has direct access from the Dulles Access Road via Trap Road. Established in 1966, the park was envisioned as an opportunity to experience live performances, related educational programs, and associated recreation in a pastoral setting within the national capital area. The park contains three, three outdoor performance spaces. They are the Fylene Center, the Children's Theater in the Woods, and the Meadow Pavilion. An affiliated performance venue, known as the Barnes at Wolf Trap, is located to the south of the Dulles Access Road. NPS does not participate in planning for or operation of the Barnes, and this site is not included in the concept master plan. There are other entertainment and facility support structures within the park, paved and turf parking areas, paved roads, managed turf areas, meadows, hiking trails, and approximately 65 acres of natural woodland, streams, and wetlands within the park's boundary that are open and available for year-round use. The Commission reviewed the most recent master plan for the park in 1997, followed by preliminary and final site and building plans for the replacement of temporary tents with permanent structures near the park's meadow area in July 2020. NPS recently hosted an, a NEPA scoping meeting last month, and will prepare a draft environmental assessment for review with the draft master plan later this year. Today, we are looking at the concept for the park's new master plan. At the concept review for a master plan, the Commission should be focused on issues such as consistency with NCPC's comprehensive plan and other policies, appropriateness of the concept for the site, and any unique or complex issues. Since the master plan is in the very beginning stages of development and the details are yet to be determined, today's presentation is meant to brief the Commission on the overall strategy of the master plan, the function of the Fylene Center, and primarily focus the Commission's feedback on the three alternatives proposed for the Main Circle Road configuration, which I will discuss in more detail later on in the presentation. Before we look at the concept for the new master plan, I would like to share with you some background information about the park and provide you with a quick orientation of the facility, including some of the key features included in the concept. Staff notes that the park is the first and only national park dedicated to the performing arts. It was developed on land donated by Ms. Catherine Fylene Schaus to the National Park Service in 1964, along with a generous sum of money towards the construction of the Fylene Center, which is a premier outdoor amphitheater-style venue with technical and operational capabilities to support a high variety, density, density and caliber of programming for up to 7,000 patrons. Ms. Schaus's vision was to conserve the land by way of experiencing the cultural arts in a pastoral outdoor setting. As a popular venue with nearly half a million visitors each year, the concept master plan is needed to address several improvements necessary to preserve the country atmosphere of the park and provide a broad spectrum of high-quality performing arts and related year-round programs. As such, staff comments favorably on the overall approach presented in the concept master plan and supports the plan's purpose to enhance the visitor, patron, and artist experience, improve safety and accessibility, create amenities that meet current industry standards, and address long-documented site and maintenance challenges. The park's existing site plan illustrates the, a concentration of performance venues in the southern and eastern portions of the site. The majority of the venue, support services, and park operations buildings are located between the Fylene Center and an area referred to as Gil's Hill. The north and west portions of the site are primarily used for turf and grass parking areas. Main Circle Road, Barn Road, and Stage Road are the primary connections between the performance spaces and the parking areas. Main Circle Road forms a loop at the main gate with bioretention in the center, which is casually referred to as the dimple for its depressed form. The key features of the park addressed in the concept master plan include the main gate, food service stand A, the South Gate service stand, the East Meadow, the Northern Approach, the Children's Theater in the Woods, the East and West parking lots, parking near the main gate, and pedestrian circulation and safety throughout the park. Here we have several existing views from within the park. Starting in the top left is a view of the edge along the East Meadow. Moving clockwise is a view of the South Picnic Area and Encore Circle Lounge. The Children's Theater in the Woods is the bottom right image, and then the East Meadow is shown in the bottom left image. Additional photos here illustrate the experience at the main gate, which is the primary entrance to the Fylene Center. The bottom right image is a photo of the primary pedestrian and vehicular approach to the center from the, from Main Circle Road. And the last three photos here are of Stand Building A, which is located to the north of the Fylene Center and houses concessions and restrooms. These photos demonstrate the topographic grade changes inherent to the property. I will now walk through some of the existing conditions related to circulation and parking on the next few slides. With regard to circulation, visitors enter the park from Trap Road at Main Circle Road, which is identified on the plan here with the purple star. From there, they can access the East and West parking lots, grass parking areas known as Gil's Hill and Encore Hill, and also Lot 3, which is a paved parking lot. Additional parking is available along the loop on Main Circle Road, near the main gate, and parking lot 1, which is to the east of the Fylene Center, and parking lot 4, which is to the south of, of the Fylene Center. Pedestrians primarily use a, a pathway adjacent to Main Circle Road and paved internal pathways from Gil's Hill to access the main gate. These are identified on this plan with the, the dashed blue lines. And then there is also a pedestrian tunnel which runs beneath Trap Road that connects patrons to the Fylene Center from, from the West Lot. A shuttle bus loading area is designated on Main Circle Road, which transports patrons between the West Falls Church Metro Station and the park during high-capacity events. That's located just about here on the plan. And a pickup and drop-off area for ride-sharing services such as taxis and Ubers informally operates along the edge of the West Lot. The park currently has some accessibility challenges primarily due to the site's existing terrain. The lower level of the Fylene Center is set approximately 40 feet below the elevation of the main gate. Two pedestrian bridges currently connect the upper level of the Fylene Center to the main gate area. However, access to the lower level for disabled or mobility impaired patrons is only feasible from Lot 4. And there is currently no direct route for these patrons between the main gate and the lower level area. For these reasons, accessible parking spaces are concentrated on Main Circle Road and Lot 4. However, demand for these spaces frequently exceeds supply. And in addition, there is currently no accessible route to the Children's Theater in the Woods. With regard to parking, the park currently has approximately 2,700 to 2,800 parking spaces on the site in total between paved and grass parking areas. The parking areas today are a result of implementing the 1997 master plan recommendations to reduce patron parking on the surrounding residential streets. The parking also serves approximately 30 full-time regular staff and more than 100 seasonal staff during the performance season. The performance season runs from May through September, with the majority of high-capacity events occurring during the summer months. During these events, parking often exceeds demand, parking supply often exceeds demand, which occurs during nearly one-third of the summer performances. Staff has analyzed this concept master plan using guidance in the Comprehensive Plan for the National Capitol. In particular, the policies related to the federal transportation, environment, parks and open space, and preservation and historic features elements. In the next series of slides, I will review the components of the concept master plan and note that the comments provided are organized into categories of transportation, pedestrian circulation, Main Circle Road options, sustainability, historic and cultural resources, and additional coordination and implementation. Overall, the concept master plan retains the primary features of the 1997 plan with alterations to certain aspects. The proposed changes include removing existing parking around the loop on Main Circle Road, expanding the main gate area with improved security, consideration for option, for an optional parking structure with accessible parking spaces on Lot 4, incorporating stormwater management improvements in the East and West lots, formalizing the ride-share loading zone in the West Lot, replacement of service stand A and the South Gate service stand, and three options for the configuration of Main Circle Road at the main gate, which I will discuss in further detail in a later portion of this presentation. The plan also retains the existing metro shuttle to the West Falls Church Station and the shuttle loading zone on Main Circle Road. I'd like to note that staff supports the proposed dedicated ride-share service area, retention of the existing metro shuttle access, and the dedicated shuttle loading space. Staff recommends the applicant also consider shuttle access to the new Spring Hill Silver Line Metro Station during those large events, and consider expanding the dedicated shuttle loading space to reduce parking demand. With regard to circulation, proposed improvements include widening Main Circle Road to add a bypass lane for vehicles needing access to lots 1 and 4, providing new accessible pedestrian connections, widening pathways along the north-south pedestrian route between Gil's Hill and the Fylene Center, realigning trails that have suffered erosion, and replacing one-trail bridge. The concept master plan also includes the option for a new pedestrian tunnel under the intersection of Barn Road and Main Circle Road, and also an option for queuing line treatments to protect patrons from the elements as they wait to enter the main gate. Overall, staff finds the proposed circulation improvements will reduce pedestrian and vehicular conflicts, improve accessibility, and support overall utilization of the amenities and program within the park. Staff also supports the option of a new pedestrian tunnel to reduce pedestrian and vehicular conflicts and requests more information about the optional queuing line treatments and how they will protect patrons from the elements. The wayfinding plan and a summary of the approach for the proposed security and safety improvements as they relate to the main gate, primary pedestrian corridors, and within the parking areas is also requested. As I noted previously, the concept master plan considers three options for the configuration of Main Circle Road near the main gate. Staff notes the purpose of the proposed alternatives is to locate at-grade accessible parking spaces closer to the Fylene Center and to better accommodate the expanded main gate, the additional bypass lane, and bus-turning movements. All three options propose to remove existing parking around the loop and include a potential parking garage with accessible spaces on Lot 4. Options A and C also include accessible surface parking spaces close to the main gate, but in different locations. Since all three options consider a potential parking garage on Lot 4, staff recommends the Commission request information regarding the parking garage footprint, height, and massing to understand the impacts of the potential garage on visual and natural resources. In addition, each option considers either a reduction or removal of the existing bioretention area. Therefore, staff recommends that any area of bioretention removed should be replaced on site. So now I will walk through an overview of the three options in a little more detail on the following slides. Option A removes, regrades, and replaces the bioretention area enclosed by Main Circle Road with a surface parking lot with approximately 40, 40 accessible parking spaces. Staff finds that while option A provides accessible surface parking close to the main gate, it significantly disrupts the view of the Fylene Center approach as a performance space within a pastoral setting. Option B does not propose any new surface parking and adds a sidewalk along the west side of Main Circle Road, which creates potentially one new pedestrian and vehicle conflict. This option also slightly reduces the existing bioretention area. This option also slightly reduces the existing bio-retention area. Staff finds that option B maintains the pastoral setting of the Filene Center approach, preserves existing trees, and minimally reduces the existing bio-retention area. However, it does not provide accessible spaces close to the main gate. And option C adds a surface parking area, a surface parking area with approximately sixty-five spaces along the west side of Main Circle Road and reduces the existing bio-retention area within the loop by approximately fifty percent. This option also includes a new sidewalk along the west side of Main Circle Road, similar to option B. And staff supports option C because it maintains the view of the Filene Center approach and provides universal access to the main gate for disabled patrons. Staff also notes that this option may require removal of existing trees and comprehensive plan policies do not support removal of existing tree, existing healthy, native, and non-invasive trees to construct surface parking when other alternatives that would preserve these trees are, are viable. Therefore, staff requests an existing tree survey with the species health and condition of those trees to be removed and a plan that identifies area for tree replacement plantings. So now we'll take a quick look at the facility improvements around the site in some more detail. At the main gate and Filene Center area, the concept master plan proposes to extend the main gate plaza and canopy space to accommodate improvements to security and pedestrian flow. Within the Filene Center, a reconfigured orchestra level will, will improve accessibility and improved sound system and backstage amenities are also proposed. In addition, Stand A, which is located just north of the Filene Center, will, will be replaced with a new structure that is universally accessible and connects the upper and lower levels of the Filene Center with an elevator. The building will include new restrooms and enhance the adjacent plaza and patron amenities. The existing South Gate service stand will be replaced with two new buildings that would provide concessions, restrooms, covered security screening, a picnic area, and an elevator between the upper and lower levels. At the Northern Approach to the Filene Center, the concept master plan proposes to add universally accessible picnic areas, a new visitor contact structure, rehabilitation or replacement of the associates building with new offices, a catering kitchen, and a restroom, removal of the staff office's trailer, and rehabilitation of the existing cabin. In the East Meadow, the plan proposes to potentially replace the Meadow Pavilion if the structure is found to be damaged by weather or flooding. A new pavilion with restrooms and potentially concessions is also proposed to serve the Children's Theater in the Woods. The plan also proposes to remove the existing Meadow kiosk, replace a stream bridge, and improve stream bank, stream bank stabilization. And further north into the east, an accessible path will be added to the Children's Theater in the Woods. Trails that, that have suffered erosion and other design issues will be realigned, and stream bank stabilization will improve the resilience of the Children's Theater. And lastly, the existing rideshare service and pickup, uh, pickup and drop-off area in the West Lot will be formalized with new striping. In addition, stormwater management improvements will be incorporated into both, both of the East and West lots. And staff supports retrofitting the existing paved lots with green infrastructure practices to manage stormwater and also recommends adding trees to these lots to provide shade and increase tree canopy coverage. And with regard to historic resources, the park is currently eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. And staff notes that a nomination for the park as a historic district is currently in progress. The concept master plan indicates that contributing resources include vegetation, spatial organization, views, buildings and structures, circulation, and natural systems and topography amongst others. As such, staff finds that additional information regarding the contributing resources to the NHRP nomination is necessary to understand potential impacts of the proposed improvements, including the alternatives for the Main Circle Road configuration. Staff also requests the applicant continue to coordinate with the Virginia Department of Historic Resources to identify potential adverse effects to, to those resources, including archaeological sites, resulting from implementation of the projects identified in the master plan. And as I have incorporated the majority of recommendations into my presentation, I will not repeat them here. The, the recommendations are also included in the first few pages of the staff report. How, however, I will note a few more recommendations regarding sustainability and additional coordination. Staff requests that the applicant coordinate with Fairfax County and the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality regarding strategies to meet stormwater and flooding requirements in a way that is compatible with the park's character. In addition, staff also requests more information on how energy conservation and sustainability objectives are incorporated throughout the plan. And staff also recommends the applicant evaluate in coordination with Fairfax County staff if local plans related to land use and development, transportation, and, and infrastructure for the surrounding area could affect the park. And lastly, staff requests an overview of the phasing and implementation of projects in the master plan with a twenty-year timeframe to include short and long-range, uh, components. So that concludes my presentation. I would like to now introduce Mr. Arvin Manocha with the Wolf Trap Foundation, followed by Ken Bigley, Acting Superintendent for the Wolf Trap National Park. And the three of us are available to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Arvin Manocha. I'm the President and CEO of the Wolf Trap Foundation. I appreciate a moment to speak with the commission and thank you for your time. I just wanted to add a little bit of history. The, the Wolf Trap Foundation is the primary partner of the National Park Service in helping provide and create the artistic programs that make up the mission of the only national park for the performing arts. We work hand and glove in all sorts of different operational activities at the park and are joined and are aimed to make sure that our founder's original vision for her land to be utilized as a gift to the American people to celebrate art, artistry, and the role artists have in society in a beautiful hundred-acre outdoor setting. A few years ago, Wolf Trap Foundation and the National Park Service started to talk in earnest about investments into National Park for the Performing Arts that could benefit visitors and patrons alike as were described. And there were a couple of things that motivated that conversation. Uh, first and foremost, performing arts venues are dynamic and the needs of artists and patrons and visitors change over time. I think we can all imagine that things were different in the early seventies, uh, as they are today. The way patrons come into the space, clearly things like security, safety, ADA, and accessibility are all very, very different today than they were almost fifty years ago. And the amenities that patrons and artists expect at top-tier performing arts centers have evolved and changed over that time. Things like food service, comfort, and other types of patron amenities. As we approached our fiftieth anniversary season, we thought it would be a good opportunity to think about the next fifty years and create a plan that continues to have Wolf Trap stay as a top-tier facility for the performing arts. And we also noted that our peers around the country that we think of as other leaders on the national landscape and outdoor park-like performing arts settings, Tanglewood, Ravinia outside Chicago, and the Hollywood Bowl in Los Angeles, have all in the last ten years embarked on enormous infrastructure improvement projects lasting many years, costing many millions of dollars. As such, the artists who we like to think perform at Wolf Trap and also at the other top-tier facilities in the country have increasingly noted that Wolf Trap is falling behind in terms of our peers around the country and offering amenities both to themselves and to their fans. Wolf Trap is a unique partnership as the only national park for the arts, and we feel there's an opportunity not only to ensure that Wolf Trap offers the amenities and patrons and experiences as other top-tier venues, but importantly, to be a leader in the country, to set the tone for the field, to inspire other venues and municipalities around the country by providing the very best experience to all who visit it and showcase the most that a public partner, part, public-private partnership can provide. These concepts have been worked on very diligently with both members of the staff of the foundation as well as staff at the National Park Service at Wolf Trap National Park, uh, with our colleagues at Gensler, and were informed by our staff's collective history and experience, the feedback of visitors and artists, and also by studying best practices around the country. We're also very fortunate at the foundation to have a very, uh, deep and long relationship with members of the Shouse family, and they have been very involved in helping us understand the original vision of Mr. Shouse's plans that were talked about but not executed in the seventies and ways in which this new master plan could potentially help further realize her long vision in terms of her gift to the nation via Wolf Trap National Park. So thank you very much for your time.
Good afternoon. My name is Ken Bigley. I'm the Acting Superintendent at Wolf Trap National Park for Performing Arts. Uh, thank you all for your time this afternoon. Um, as, as Arvin noted, we are very proud of our partnership with the Wolf Trap Foundation. Um, each, i- in this partnership, each of the entities is able to concentrate on its respective area of expertise. On the foundation side, we are very grateful for the ability to put together a high-quality, robust, world-class performing arts experience. And on the national park side, um, as the manager of public lands, we take very seriously our responsibility to preserve the historical character and the landscape of, of the land. And that's very much in keeping with Mrs. Shouse's vision as, um, as Ms. Free referred to in, in the presentation. Essentially, Mrs. Shouse's vision was to marry up two things that were very dear to her. Um, her love of the performing arts as well as her love of the natural world. And so through the architecture, through the landscape, through the overall visitor experience, um, we take that responsibility very seriously, along with the foundation, to, um, to find a way to provide a world-class performing arts experience and at the same time preserve the pastoral character and the, um, pastoral experience and the natural beauty that is so, uh, integral, we believe, to the Wolf Trap experience. Um, through this master plan process, we, uh, we welcome feedback and we're very grateful to the commission for your feedback and for your questions today. We, um, want to honor Mrs. Shouse's tradition by finding that appropriate balance of providing the modern amenities and the necessary upgrades with respect to security and accessibility and a lot of things that indeed have changed since nineteen seventy-one, while also balancing those with our mandate to preserve the resource and preserve the landscape and the experience that really makes Wolf Trap unique. Um, so again, thank you for your time and we're happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you so much, Ms. Reed, Mr. Bigley, and Mr. Manocha. It was a very helpful presentation and it's really great to hear the context and the, and the vision from the inception of this very special place. Um, I'd like to open it up now to the commission for a discussion. I'd like to start with, um, Commissioner May, since this is a National Park Service project. And I, I skipped right over if anyone had any questions of our presenters. But i- if you'd like, we could start, and if you have discussion or questions, we'll handle them at the same time. So with that, I turn it to Commissioner May.
Uh, I do not have any questions, uh, and I, um, am grateful for the staff report on this. I think all of the recommendations and requests are, um, things that we are, you know, we, we, nothing's a surprise. Everything is manageable and, uh, much of what's actually been requested, I think we're already, uh, at work on. So, um, we appreciate the helpful feedback and look forward to coming back, uh, and getting an approval, uh, soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Argo.
Hi, I, I don't have any questions at this time, but, um, it's exciting to see the, um, the vision for, uh, this wonderful place. So we look forward to the, um, to seeing the progress on that and, uh, appreciate your, your, your time and coming and sharing, um, the plans and making this presentation for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright.
I'm coming. Um, I, I don't have any major comments either, um, other than to say option C and more trees. More trees by the parking lots. I mean, option C on the, the layout of the parking. May, I know that it means some tree loss and you'll have to look at the status of the current trees, but it did, it, but I, I think it was the best option for the composition as a whole, and I, I was looking at it and thinking the same thing, more trees, more trees. And it would also enhance the safety, um, by create, uh, I think pedestrian safety by creating a little bit of a buffer zone just in case somebody got overenthusiastic in their car. Um, and what's wrong with more trees? That's it. I thought it was generally, um, uh, very good and going in the right direction. I don't have as, nearly as many reservations about this one as I did about the Goddard one. So, um, thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Dixon.
Uh, I think it's a great idea. I'm glad to see we're stepping up our game to be, uh, competitive with others around the country. It's a wonderful facility and clearly it's got good custodians in charge of it.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon. Commissioner Davis.
Uh, no questions for me. Thanks for the presentation.
Commissioner Davenport.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to the folks at Wolf Trap, Arvin and Shannon, for making the facility available for in-person visits to look at some of these, uh, plans you have for the future and, uh, look forward to seeing this advance. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Trueblood.
Um, no questions. I guess I will just say, yeah, I appreciate the presentation. Um, I appreciate especially the, the kind of looking towards universal accessibility and improving the accessibility of, of, of the park. Um, you know, I was kind of struck actually, a- and I'm just gonna, uh, underline one of the recommendations, which is looking at the connection to the Spring Hill Metro Station. Uh, it is somewhere between a mile or two, well, a little over a mile, closer to two miles away. It's actually closer than West Falls Church. Um, so I think that that might be an asset that as you continue to refine, I just wanna, I would really strongly encourage incorporation of that into your, um, into your transportation plans.
Thank you. Um, and Commissioner McMahon.
I have no comments. Good presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. So is there a motion to approve the comments?
So moved.
Was moved by Commissioner McMahon, I believe seconded by Commissioner Argo.
May.
Commissioner May. Thank you. Um, Ms. Costa, can you please confirm and take the vote by roll call?
Certainly, uh, the motion by Commissioner McMahon, the second by Commissioner May, and with that, Commissioner Trueblood.
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon.
Yes.
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Commissioner Argo.
Yes.
Uh, Vice Chair White.
Yes.
Commissioner Wright.
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Davis.
Abstain.
And Commissioner Davenport.
Yes.
Uh, with one abstention, uh, the motion is approved.
Thank you very much. So that covers our action items, and now we have two information presentations. Agenda item eight A is an information presentation on the Hirshhorn Museum Sculpture Garden revitalization effort. And Mr. Webb is here to give us a presentation.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me and can you see my presentation?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Vice Chair White and members of the commission. Today I'm here to brief you on the progress of the Hirshhorn Sculpture Garden revitalization project, share new information, and seek your comments on the proposed changes to the garden, namely to the interpartition wall prior to the commission formally hearing a revised preliminary plan submission in July. At the December third, twenty twenty meeting, the commission approved the preliminary site development plans for the Sculpture Garden project, with the exception of changes to the interpartition wall and the reflecting pool. The commission recommended that the applicant study other design alternatives for the reflecting pool and provide a comprehensive rationale for the programming needs that require the expanded aprons around the historic bunshaft pool. The commission also requested that the applicant provide a similar programming rationale for the change in material proposed for the interpartition wall. Following today's information presentation, the commission will review the revised preliminary site development plans at the July first meeting. The Smithsonian plans to submit the project for a final review in early fall of twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty-one. The purpose of today's presentation is to provide the commission with the information submitted by the Smithsonian as requested at the December meeting. It will also afford the commission an opportunity to consider and ask questions on the outstanding issues. the commission an opportunity to consider and ask questions on the outstanding issues, namely the proposed treatment of the interpartition wall before taking action on revised preliminary plans. The question for the commission discussion is whether the Hirshhorn Museum and Sculpture Garden as a complex will retain its historic significance and character with this rehabilitation project, and whether the program need justifies the change in height and material of the interpartition wall. As a reminder, the Sculpture Garden is located at 700 Independence Avenue Southwest on the National Mall, and is part of the Hirshhorn Museum complex. The Hirshhorn complex is framed by Seventh Street to the east, the Mary Livingston Ripley Garden to the west, Independence Avenue on the south, and the National Mall along its northern edge. Jefferson Drive separates the museum building from the garden and is controlled by the National Park Service. The museum and garden are organized around the Eighth Street axis, nor, excuse me, the Eighth Street north-south axis, aligning with the National Gallery of Art Sculpture Garden and the National Archives across the National Mall to the north. In response to the commission's recommendations back in December, the Smithsonian prepared a narrative containing updated programming information pertaining to their proposed changes to the historic Bunschaff Reflecting Pool and the interpartition wall. Previously, the Smithsonian had indicated their preferred design for the pool included expanding the historic Bunschaff Pool, if you should look, located here on three sides to provide opportunities for seating when the pool was drained. The Smithsonian has included a new design that retains the original dimensions and location of the historic Bunschaff Pool and removes the proposed expanded aprons. The new reflecting pool to the south, shown here in the Central Gallery, has been reduced in size to complement the dimensions of the historic pool, and an expanded planting bed is now proposed to the north of the Bunschaff Pool adjacent to the interpartition wall. The Smithsonian has indicated they will now pursue this design approach for the reflecting pool as it provides a balance to historic preservation goals and the need for the envisioned programming of the garden project, particularly in the Central Gallery. This new design approach has been shared with the Section 106 consulting parties and has received general support. Commission staff supports the new pool design since it retains the footprint and location of the original Bunschaff Pool. With regard to the interpartition wall, as we have noted in previous presentations, it suffers from concrete disease as can be, as can be seen here in this photograph, and requires replacement like all the other aggregate concrete elements of the Sculpture Garden. The Smithsonian continues to propose rebuilding the wall in its same location, but 18 inches lower in height, with a change in material from the existing granite aggregate concrete to stacked stone with some Swenson pink granite stone included. The interpartition wall is a contributing feature of the Hirshhorn Museum and Sculpture Garden complex, and therefore, the decision to lower the wall and change its material from aggregate to stacked stone should be evaluated in the context of the entire rehabilitation project and in accordance with the criteria laid out in the Section 106 process for rehabilitation projects. For the Secretary of the Interior Standards for the Treatment of Historic Properties, rehabilitation acknowledges the need to alter or add to a historic property to meet continuing or changing uses while retaining the property's historic character. The standards state that the historic character of a property shall be retained and preserved, and the removal of historic materials or alteration of features and spaces that characterize a property shall be avoided. In sum, change may be acceptable to meet continuing or changing uses as long as the property's historic significance and character is preserved. Therefore, the questions that need to be discussed include, what is the property's historic significance and character? How does the proposal impact the property's historic significance? What is the changing use or program need that is driving this rehabilitation project? And can the program need be met while avoiding the alteration of material? Now I will walk the commission through each of these pertinent questions. First, let's look at the property's historic significance and those elements that contribute to its character. In the determination of eligibility form, and going forward, I'll refer to it as the DOE, for the National Register of Historic Places, prepared by the Smithsonian in 2016, and agreed to by the District of Columbia State Historic Preservation Officer, the Hirshhorn Museum and Sculpture Garden as a complex were determined to meet the criteria for the National Register with the form stating that the Hirshhorn Museum and Sculpture Garden is significant as an outstanding example of modernist architecture by a recognized master in the field, Gordon Bunschaff, with a design that was closely tailored to its urban planning context, as well as associated collection of modern and contemporary art. In addition, the form states that the building, the plaza, and the Sculpture Garden are significant for its evocation of the rigorous modernism for which Bunschaff is renowned. The design is also significant as a representation of the changing conception of the National Mall, which during the 1960s and 1970s experienced a marked break from neoclassicism and a shift towards modernism. The architecture of the museum building is anchored by its central concrete drum and fountain, and the surrounding plaza and associated Sculpture Garden are similarly significant features of the Hirshhorn composition conceived as a single unit. The plaza surrounding the building, and in particular, the battered walls that encase it, defined the building's site and elevated above the surrounding context. The sunken Sculpture Garden is significant as it represents the controversy the design of the Hirshhorn created, as well as the compromises that became necessary to see it completed. In evaluating the integrity of the Hirshhorn complex for the DOE, the museum's location and setting on the National Mall have remained intact, and the property has retained its integrity of setting, location, and design as a singular architectural and urban landmark. The limited material palette that defines the character of these spaces is generally unaltered, allowing the site to convey its integrity of materials and workmanship. The DOE does acknowledge that the plaza and the Sculpture Garden have been modified from their original appearances based on Lester Collins's design in 1981, yet the strong formal elements that generate the character of these spaces has been retained, allowing them to retain their integrity of design. In the case of the plaza, it's the perimeter walls and the relationship to the museum drum. And in the case of the Sculpture Garden, it is its sunken nature and intimacy of scale in relation to the National Mall. The spaces continue to act as backgrounds for the display of sculpture and its quiet, zen-like, and contemplative retreats from the surrounding urban environment. Therefore, they continue to convey their integrity of feeling and association. The DOE identifies the contributing elements of the Hirshhorn complex associated with its historic significance and character, including the museum building's drum-like form, the central courtyard, and plaza. For today's presentation, I will focus on those contributing elements associated with the Sculpture Garden. For the Sculpture Garden, the contributing elements cited in the DOE include the sunken plan and the setting for the display of rotating sculpture, the reflecting pool, the perimeter walls, and the interpartition wall, and the north and south stairs. As part of this Section 106 consultation, the Smithsonian has reevaluated the work of Lester Collins from 1981, and determined that his design also contributes to the significance of the Hirshhorn Sculpture Garden, which led them to suggest that the period of significance for the DOE be revised to include those aspects up to 1981 for the garden only. The contributing elements of Collins's work include the lateral north ramps that were included for accessibility into the garden, the hardscape paving materials, and the garden rooms, and the east ramp at the intermediate level that leads into the Central Gallery. Next, let's move into a discussion as to how the Smithsonian's proposal impacts the Hirshhorn's historic significance. The proposal maintains a majority of the contributing elements and also reestablishes the tunnel and south stairs under Jefferson Avenue connecting the museum to the garden. This connection is a major feature of the original design that has been lost to visitors for decades. The project will primarily impact two contributing elements to the significance of the complex as a whole. The north entrance by removing the lateral north ramps and to accommodate, that were added to accommodate ADA accessibility and altering the north stair, and then the proposed, and the change in material of the interpartition wall from concrete to, to stone and lowering its height by 18 inches. The specific elements of the rehabilitation proposal include replacing the failing aggregate concrete of the perimeter walls with in-kind material and raising the height six inches to meet today's code requirements. The retention of the historic Bunschaff Reflecting Pool in the Central Gallery in its original location and dimensions. Restoration of that underground connection between the garden, the plaza, and the museum building, while reincorporating the original historic tunnel stairs. As shown here in dark gray with thicker outlines, the introduction of new auxiliary walls of stacked stone within the garden to define space and serve as backdrops for the museum sculpture. A new reflecting pool will also be added within the garden Central Gallery to allow for staging and seating opportunities for performances when drained. And new accessibility ramps located from the north entrance to the west side that will provide accessible access from both the north and south into the garden. New overlooks will be created on the east and west sides of the garden, while the north entrance from the National Mall will be expanded to create a new overlook to the garden. The Smithsonian has indicated that the width of the new entrance here to the north overlook matches Bunschaff's original stair width from his 1974 design at 60 feet. The Smithsonian has stated that the new overlook wall on the north in aggregate, which is located here, would hold the composition of the garden, the museum building, and the plaza together. The Smithsonian has said that they would not, you would not be able to see the stacked stone walls when looking at the museum from the National Mall. However, the new stacked stone material for the interpartition wall, as well as the new auxiliary walls, will be visible as the new, at, excuse me, will be visible at the new northern entrance overlook into the garden. This change has the potential to alter the views into the garden from the north entrance. Under current conditions, a person standing at the entrance to the garden from the National Mall would see the interpartition wall, shown here outlined in this image, made of aggregate with the Hirshhorn Museum building drum in the background. Under the proposed condition, a person in the same location would see a new wall of aggregate at the north overlook, slightly closer to the entrance with the Hirshhorn building drum in the background. Upon approaching the new overlook, a person could look down and see the interpartition wall proposed to be rebuilt in stacked stone at a height 18 inches lower than the existing wall. The east and west gardens will remain largely intimate settings for sculpture, while the Central Gallery with the pool and the plaza area would be more visible from the northern, or the north overlook. While we've discussed the applicant's goals for this project in prior reviews, it's important for us to revisit the changing use and the program needs driving the rehabilitation of the garden. The Smithsonian's intention to revitalize the Hirshhorn Sculpture Garden is to improve the visitor experience and public engagement and accommodate the museum's mission and contemporary programming needs. The Smithsonian has indicated that the Hirshhorn Sculpture Garden revitalization project will address the following goals for the Hirshhorn Museum: Reinforce the connections between the mall, Sculpture Garden, and museum; Enhance visitor experience and public engagement; Create flexible spaces for artists working to push the media of sculpture and performance forward into the 21st century; Show the museum's significant bronze sculpture collection to the strongest effect; Revitalize and build upon the historic framework of the Sculpture Garden; And replace failing infrastructure meet current code requirements and design for resilience and sustainability. The Smithsonian contends that the aesthetics of this space, including the backdrop of the interpartition wall here in stacked stone, the water features and plantings are integral to this new program of large installations and performances while creating a cohesive vision for the next iteration of the garden's life. In addition, as rebuilt in stacked stone, the interpartition wall would link the east and west galleries of the garden. The Smithsonian has also noted that the use of stacked stone for the interpartition wall will provide better acoustics for performances envisioned in the Central Gallery. This is based on acoustic studies that they have commissioned. And with regard to lowering the wall by 18 inches to an overall height of eight feet three inches at the base in the Central Gallery, the Smithsonian would like to increase views of the Central Gallery once visitors from the National Mall approached the overlook. The Smithsonian has done several studies that showed the majority of museum visitors approached their museums from the National Mall. While the Smithsonian's proposal to reintroduce the south stairs and tunnel from the Hirshhorn Building and Plaza will bring more visitors into the garden from that location, they would like to lower the interpartition wall 18 inches to draw more people down into the sunken garden once they see the Central Gallery from the overlook on the National Mall side of the complex. In response to commission comments in December, the Smithsonian has also provided several examples of stacked stone walls around the National Mall and examples of this technique serving as the backdrop of bronze, for bronze sculpture. They have noted the organic and natural appearance of the stacked stones complement a full range of textures and tones in the modern sculpture collection as shown in multiple comparisons. With all that being said, we need to discuss if the Smithsonian's program need can be met while avoiding alteration of the interpartition wall's material. The Smithsonian considered other spaces for large installations and performance art, but they have indicated there are no spaces that can provide the scale and aesthetics of the sunken Central Gallery for this changing use. They have further noted the importance from an aesthetic perspective of the wall, the plantings, and pools designed cohesively as a space for this new program. Should the interpartition wall retain its current height and material, the Smithsonian maintains that their programmatic goals for this project would be diminished, especially pertaining to visitor experience and better acoustics, as well as the aesthetic and curatorial intents envisioned by the project. The Smithsonian contends that the lowered and stacked stone interpartition wall is the singular element which knits together the Sculpture Garden's east, central, and west spaces, and provides a distinctive artistic backdrop for performance art, enhancing the visitor experience with added visual interest and emphasis. While serving in its own right as a rich and dynamically textured focal point, strengthening the garden's central axis, sense of proportion, and impact. In summary, the Smithsonian has articulated a new program need based on changing uses, in this case, the desire to accommodate performances and larger installations in addition to their bronze sculptures. The proposed rehabilitation project will maintain a majority of the contributing elements, and it will also reestablish the south stairs and tunnel under Jefferson Avenue connecting the museum to the garden. The project would primarily impact two contributing elements to the significance of the complex as a whole. The north entrance by removing the lateral north ramps introduced by Collins to accommodate ADA accessibility, and then altering, and altering the north stair, and then the change in material proposed for the interpartition wall from concrete to stone and lowering the wall 18 inches. Based on the criteria used to determine its eligibility, it appears the property as a whole will retain its eligibility for listing in the National Register should the project be approved. The question for the commission discussion is whether the Hirshhorn Museum and Sculpture Garden as a complex will retain its historic significance and character with this rehabilitation, and whether the program need justifies the change in height and the material of the interpartition and the material of the interpartition wall. This concludes my information presentation. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Anne Trowbridge with the Smithsonian to provide brief remarks. She will be followed by Melissa Chu, the Director of the Hirshhorn Museum. And I'll note that also members of the project design team are also here to help answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Webb, and good afternoon, Vice Chairman White and Commission members. We appreciate this additional opportunity to address key aspects of the Sculpture Garden design and our requirements. We thank the Commission staff for the extra effort on this project. I will speak to you briefly as the Smithsonian architect representing our projects before NCPC. Then I will introduce Melissa Chu, Director of the Hirshhorn, and Fay Harwell, landscape architect for the project.
Thank you, Anne. It's Melissa. I wonder if everyone can see you on video because I cannot.
Um, I have my camera on.
Yes, I can see you, Ms. Trowbridge.
Oh, very good. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Can others see Ms. Trowbridge?
Uh, excuse me?
I was just asking if others could see.
She's frozen on my screen.
I can see her.
Yeah.
Okay, um, we seek your endorsement on the revised alternative design for the pool. And I would like to talk now about the stacked stone partition. We continue to maintain that this wall as stacked stone is needed to support the museum's program and need and to replace the existing inner wall with in-kind with concrete would be an enduring mistake. While this wall was rightly described in our draft nomination of the garden to the National Register as a defining characteristic of the Bunshaft design, it no longer has the same role. It is no longer the boundary one encountered in 1974 after descending a wide flight of stairs head-on from the National Mall, or should I say the parking and vehicle lane of the National Mall that existed in that early photo, forming a composition as part of the Sculpture Garden's concrete perimeter walls that relates the garden to the museum building and similarly enclosed plaza. Lester Collins changed the role of the interpartition wall by creating a new north boundary of the garden in 1981 with a narrowed entrance, plantings and lateral ramps. In the proposed design, the interpartition wall is now largely hidden from view as one enters from the National Mall. A new east-west concrete wall forms the mall level edge of the north overlook and very importantly performs the function of completing the concrete wall perimeter along with a reinvigorated landscape at this edge. In Hiroshi Sugimoto's design, the interpartition wall becomes a part of the garden's interior system of gallery walls against which sculpture is displayed, performances take place and site-specific installations are created. The interpartition wall remains the anchor point to the spatial organization of the Central Gallery. The Smithsonian has acknowledged that the change to the interpartition wall would constitute an adverse effect and has developed and shared with Section 106 consulting parties a draft memorandum of agreement that addresses adverse effect in accordance with the National Historic Preservation Act of 1966. In considering NCPC's role in determining the material and configuration of the interior gallery walls of the Sculpture Garden, it should be noted that in that same year, 1966, an act of Congress created this museum and provided for a Hirshhorn Board of Trustees that would have the sole authority not only to acquire, lend, exchange or sell items in its collection, but also to, and I quote, "determine policy as to the method of display of the works of art contained in said museum and Sculpture Garden," end quote. We urge you to continue to support our Smithsonian Museum's decision-making and expertise in the display of their collections, both indoors and outdoors. It is now my pleasure to introduce Melissa Chu, Director of the Hirshhorn Museum and Sculpture Garden.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me and see me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Anne, and thank you, Vice Chair White and Commissioners. It's a pleasure to see all of you again. The pioneering architectural critic for the New York Times, Ada Louise Huxtable, wrote about the Hirshhorn when it opened nearly fifty years ago. To what degree can and should a museum building be a work of art in itself? And what kind of balance can be struck between the structure and the objects it serves? These are prophetic words for the kinds of conversations we've been having about the Hirshhorn's plans to revitalize its Sculpture Garden. The Hirshhorn Museum and Sculpture Garden's mission is to present and support the work of modern and contemporary artists. Our building and Sculpture Garden are in service to the art it exhibits. And the expectations and needs of visitors and artists have changed over its near fifty-year history. The Hirshhorn Sculpture Garden was designed by Gordon Bunshaft and within only three years modified by Lester Collins nearly forty years ago, establishing shade and changing the character of the garden with smaller rooms for the display of art. The Sculpture Garden's design was established by an architect, modified by a landscape architect, and now we have a revitalization design by an artist architect in Hiroshi Sugimoto. Sugimoto presents us with a 21st century idea of a Sculpture Garden that offers a range of experiences to our museum visitors. Intimate gem-like galleries of modern sculptures such as Rodin and Henry Moore to a large open field gallery for newly commissioned and large-scale sculptures, the kind that we cannot show today in our Sculpture Garden, to mid-sized scaled spaces for a combination of sculpture and the newest genre of performance art. This range and flexibility provides us with the same kind of programming ability as our museum galleries provide. It's notable that Sugimoto is an artist and that he is Japanese-American. For both Bunshaft and Collins were influenced by Japanese design principles since both visited and even studied in Japan. The stone-stacked walls are a significant feature of Sugimoto's design and the continuation of Japanese design influences established by the previous two designs. They are used throughout the Sculpture Garden as gallery walls would within the museum. They're created to match the plaza wall in shape and presented as lower and separate from the Bunshaft walls. We cannot see these gallery stone walls until we are fully inside the Sculpture Garden. That goes for the inner partition wall as well. This inner partition wall is central to a cohesive design approach, linking our east and west galleries and to our curatorial approach to sculpture. We believe that our sculpture collection of modern bronze works are presented to best effect in front of these stone-stacked walls. We've built three mock-up walls to demonstrate this. The inner partition wall serves as a gallery wall for not just one, but two such exhibition areas. The Central Gallery with the reflecting pool, as well as the à la section of the gallery above the Central Gallery but below this elevated entrance from the mall. By changing the material, it allows the museum to curate sculpture in these two places because it provides a backdrop that gives the sculpture both freshness and impact. It also provides acoustic benefits for the planned performances. When Lester Collins modified the entrance from the mall, the scale and role of the inner partition wall changed. By lowering the wall and changing its material, although it will be featured, it will also feature Swenson Pinkstone, which is the same stone used by Bunshaft's original concrete aggregate walls. Its intention is to make the Sculpture Garden a more inviting and comfortable space for visitors. The inner partition wall also allows visitors a view into the Central Gallery, which is not possible right now. And that's a key feature that encourages visitors across the Sculpture Garden, enhancing the visitor experience. We're also pleased to have been able to present the revised alternative for the reflecting pool that retains the distinctive character to the original Bunshaft pool following six consultation, public consultation meetings. The reason for this revitalization actually began as a question. Why is it that we currently receive nearly one million visitors to our sculpture, to our museum while the Sculpture Garden receives only a hundred and fifty thousand visitors? Which is even more astounding when we look at the fact that the Sculpture Garden's location on the National Mall receives thirty-five million visitors. We attribute two reasons to this. The current design of the entrance from the National Mall and our ability to effectively program in the Sculpture Garden. This revitalization design by Hiroshi Sugimoto addresses both these issues. Firstly, the widening of the entrance from the National Mall to the original Bunshaft dimensions. And secondly, through the stone-stacked walls, stone-stacked walls and the layout, we're offering the most flexible gallery spaces for not just the art of today, but that of tomorrow, consistent with our mission. There are elements of this revitalization that are about preservation, either actually or in spirit. But just as the NCPC mission recognizes the idea of preservation and enhancement, we offer this design as a Sculpture Garden that preserves important elements of its history while offering enhancements for our visitors and for the display of art. Perhaps most importantly though, a Sculpture Garden for the 21st century, true to the Hirshhorn mission and its desire to be a leader amongst its peer museums in this country. Thank you very much. And now I'd like to pass on to Fay Harwell, my colleague who's advising this project on landscape design. Thank you, Fay.
Thank you so much, Melissa. Good afternoon, Madam Vice Chair and members of the Commission. I'll focus my comments on the overall landscape design because after all, this is a garden. The Sugimoto team has carefully studied the passage into the garden, both from the museum proper to the south and from the National Mall. On the south side, I wanted to mention that four new elm trees will line the Jefferson Drive edge, providing shade to visitors along the drive and the garden space below. From the mall side to the north, you've heard a number of comments about the experience and I think visitors are offered an inviting transition from the majestic scale of the mall to the small scale of the 1.6 acre Sculpture Garden. Approached from the mall, the entrance brings back Gordon Bunshaft's sixty-foot wide opening, wide enough to be inviting. The space provides the overlook of the Sculpture Garden and makes the transition between the mall and the garden. The view from the mall is first of the museum drum, as you've seen, flanked by the concrete walls of the entrance and framed by a mesh of branches from new trees along the mall edge. I'll talk about those a little later. The perimeter wall and the trees maintain this feeling of enclosure that we know today. The elm trees at the east and west aprons, originally introduced by Bunshaft and maintained in Collins' design, further enhance the sense of enclosure of the sunken space below and we will be protecting those and adding one tree. Entering the garden is a key experience. Gordon Bunshaft's 1974 design was open and fully exposed. Lester Collins' 1981 changes made the entrance to the garden smaller with very narrow walkways, improved accessibility and intimate spaces. The Sugimoto team design allows visitors to discover the entrance to the garden from the mall while being graciously welcomed. And passage between those entry walls and the frame of ten, the ten cherry trees creates a space at once distinguished from the mall and a hint of what's beyond. Visitors have this overview of the three garden gallery spaces. The central pool garden, the western garden with its lawn and canopy of delicate leafy trees and ground cover plantings. And visitors may then choose to descend into one of these spaces to begin their journey through the gardens. The east garden is entered under broad sugar maples and tall pine trees toward a grove of red maple trees that defines this most intimate of the three spaces. As visitors descend the stairs or elect to walk down the generous west ramp, they enter the secret garden of the museum's sculptural treasures. I did want to mention that what you've seen to date is really about the overall structure of the spaces and the garden, its trees and ground plane are a vital and key part of the composition. And we look forward to sharing this with you in more detail at future phases. But to give you a sense of the plantings that are proposed in the design, Gordon Bunshaft's plant palette was minimalist. He used evergreen shrubs and only a few trees of just three species. Lester Collins' 1981 plan dramatically increased the number of trees, though many of his selections were not shade canopy trees and many of them did not survive Washington DC climatic conditions. Today, forty-nine trees remain in the garden and our team's plan increases both of the number of trees in the garden and the area shaded by tree canopy. The design provides fifty-eight trees divided among eight species. Five of these species are native, the other three are Japanese in origin. As Lester Collins' interest has been mentioned in Japanese plants and it's carried into the new design. Coverage of the garden with a canopy of trees will increase shade and the lush landscape extends beyond the trees into the ground plane. In a close collaboration, my team, the Sugimoto team in Tokyo and Smithsonian Gardens have worked together to develop a rich and diverse palette of forty-seven species of smaller plants in the ground plane. Primarily herbaceous materials, our coverage of the ground will be nearly native, nearly seventy percent native species. And with these plantings, we're crafting a soft ground plane limited in flower color to create a stylized, rich national, naturalistic floor of plantings. The diverse textures and height will complement the sculptures within the sunken gardens as well as within the aprons under the elm tree at the mall level. In addition to the planting teams, the museum's curators have been working closely with us so that the effect of each planting area and each planting zone is suited to the sculptures displayed. And we are testing those ideas out. You've seen a couple of photographs of the ground plane plantings at the very first week that they were installed. And to test out our design, those two mock-up areas were planted early this spring within the west garden. The area is open to the public and we invite the Commission to explore the effect in person as these plants begin to grow and thrive and we learn what will work best in this varied garden. Thank you very much for giving us the time to talk about this subject.
Thank you, Ms. Harwell, Ms. Chu, Ms. Trowbridge and Mr. Webb for the presentation. That was really very helpful, very informative. And at this point, I'd like to ask if there are any questions for the applicant team or for the staff. If there aren't any questions from our other commissioners, I have a few questions. But Commissioner Dixon, you go first. Thank you.
I just had a general question. I think I recall the use of, was there ever a tented area, a large tented area used at the, at the, at the museum for, for, for a period of time?
Commissioner Dixon, we have installed tents just for special events, but not over any extended period of time.
Of course, I wouldn't expect to be extended, but I just knew that you have used them, I thought. And I wondered whether or not the, the mechanics of that have been included in, in what you're doing now. have been included in what you're doing now, just for future use, not, of course, not permanently, but just for your programming.
Yes, I think that that's really our intentions with the, what we're calling the West Gallery, which is that open field space, which will be an uninterrupted long plane of a space that will enable us to tent and do programming even when it's not wonderful weather. So, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner May, you turned your camera on, and I see Commissioner Wright has her hand raised. Commissioner May, did you want to ask a question?
No, no questions. I was just getting ready for a discussion.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wright?
Yes, I have a question. Do we have a section of one of the interior walls? The reason I'm asking is because in some of the renderings, it looks like the walls have a tapered profile, but I don't recall that being part of the discussion. Because, Lee, do you have a, do you have a section anywhere in your presentation? Ann, could you answer that? I just don't...
Yes, they are tapered, and I think we have illustrations. I don't know the page number, and Lee, you had sections.
Mr. Champ, if you could pull up slide 49. Thank you.
So, so, are, is this, obviously, this is a... Okay, so, on the 1971 SOM section, is that as-built? Because this is confusing, right? The existing partition wall on the left clearly is not tapered. What is the, what is the... What does this drawing mean on, from 1971? Go ahead.
No, go on, Ann.
The one on the right is the plaza wall. The plaza is the area immediately around the drum of the museum building. Okay, so the walls, the partition walls in the garden are, all have a perpendicular profile? I mean, a linear, straight, not tapered profile? My vocabulary is failing me right now, but you get the gist.
No, they, they have a mix.
They do. This, I just want to ask, so this drawing is really focused only on the inner partition wall, not the other walls that would be stacked stone?
That is correct, but if we look at the rendering on slide, I think it's 45, Tony? I think you can see that the new auxiliary walls in stacked stone would also have that kind of tapered, which was shown in the current mock-up video that we shared.
Yep.
Okay.
But my question is, are the aggregate, the original aggregate walls, are they tapered or no? I got, I got that the plaza walls are tapered, but in the garden proper?
My understanding, Commissioner Wright, is the current existing, the historic aggregate walls are not tapered.
That's my recollection, but it's been a while since I've been there.
Correct. The plaza walls, as Ms. Trowbridge said, they have the tapered, but within the Sculpture Garden in itself, the historic aggregate walls that are there are not tapered.
So theoretically, the tapered stacked stone walls are riffing off of the plaza profile as another, as another motif to integrate the garden and plaza, theoretically to integrate the composition. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, and that the, in, for performances, the angle of the wall also helps on acoustics, so you, you don't get a direct reverberation. It bounces your wave, you know, at an angled direction.
Okay, thank you.
Were there any other questions from the commissioners? I have a couple of questions. I heard in the different presentations about Mr. Collins rehabilitation, or renovation, I should say. And I'm curious, when I heard that what he did didn't change the roll of the original inner partition wall, but am I correct that he didn't actually change the wall at all, right? The wall remained as Bunshaft designed it? He just did his work around? Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was clear on that. And then on the acoustics, and I know, given the program and need and what you're trying to achieve, the acoustics, the slanted wall, if you will, is a benefit to acoustics, but could that be overcome with technology if you kept the original wall?
I'd like to recognize Allison Steele from the design team to talk to that point.
That'd be great, thank you. I was just trying to understand the benefits of that.
Hello, everyone. Can you see and hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Madam Vice Chair, members of the Commission, and thank you for asking about this. Acoustics are so important to how a space functions and is experienced, but you can't see them, right? So, you asked whether the acoustic issues with the existing construction of the center partition wall could be overcome. And it's really a question of intelligibility. Our acquisition advises us that intelligibility being the, when a sound is created within the space, can it be clearly perceived and understood by others in the same space? And that has to do with, above all, avoiding echoes. And in 2019, we did an acoustic analysis of the existing garden. And to be knowing that performance art is so important to the future of the Hurshorns' mission and the garden's ability to support that mission. And looking at that center partition wall, it has some attributes that are problematic. It's a very hard concrete wall, has a relatively smooth surface, and it's absolutely vertical. And these three characteristics make it a very efficient element for creating echoes. And in fact, you really could not find a better way to create more echoes within the space that compromise the intelligibility. So, something really needs to be done if this space is to be used for the types of performance art encounters that are planned.
That's really helpful, thank you. And Mr. Lee, you mentioned the 106 process? And I'm just curious for the, to give a context for the Commission, do you have an overview of what some of the concerns are? I appreciate Ms. Trowbridge, Ms. Trowbridge's comment that it will have an adverse impact on the inner partition wall. It's a contributing factor. So I'm just curious, from a historic preservation and landmark issue, what, what are some of those concerns?
Yeah. As Ms. Trowbridge noted, we've had, I believe, six consulting parties to date. We have one scheduled. The Smithsonian has scheduled one on June 17. As, and this has been going on for several years now, certainly, the consulting parties, particularly the DC State Historic Preservation Office, the Committee of 100, the Cultural Landscape Foundation, have all expressed concerns with aspects of the project. The two kind of key points that have continued to be of issue, one was the retention of the Bunshaft reflecting pool, which now, as I mentioned at the last consulting party meeting, the Smithsonian shared this revised design where they will retain the Bunshaft pool, have decreased the size of the new pool, but they're still in letters concern about the change of materiality to the inner partition wall. I will note that that has, in the last round of correspondence, based on that last CP meeting, that has been, I would say that continues to be a source of discussion in the consulting party meetings as to what we're talking about, the issue with the partition wall and its proposed treatment.
Thank you. So if there are no other questions for the applicant team or staff, I'd love to open this up for discussion. I'll start with Commissioner Dixon and then go in a round-robin format using our normal seating order. So if the commissioners could keep their webcams on during the discussion, that would be really helpful. So, Commissioner Dixon?
I have no further questions at this time. Great presentation, looking forward to it.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis? I think she had to step away. Commissioner Davenport?
No questions or comments at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Trueblood?
Thanks, and thanks for the presentation. And that's, you know, I appreciate a number of the improvements that have been made, whether it's the tunnel or addressing the pool. But I guess, I guess it's, I guess we're going to be stuck around this stone here, aren't we? We're going to pick a fight about that, so let's do it. Because, you know, you know, certainly anyone can make the case that it is ideal, that it's desired, maybe even that it's needed. Sure, I don't even, we don't even need to get there because to me, Section 106 is pretty clear that whether it cannot be avoided. And I think I just, I haven't seen that. You know, if this were primarily a performance space, maybe, maybe, maybe. But this isn't. This is primarily a Sculpture Garden. That is the name of it. That is what it is. So I guess, I'll just keep it short to say I'm not convinced that this meets the Section 106 standards, the stacked stone. And I would argue, too, the height, the 18 inches, I think maybe there's something, you know, that is, that is maybe an opportunity, but both the materiality, which is just so like opposite of the modernist, kind of historic modernist kind of feel, as well as, as well as Commissioner Wright points out, the tapered, the tapered nature of it just gives it a completely different feel. And so I just, you know, to me, it doesn't, I just don't, I didn't, I'm not convinced that it kind of clears that very high bar for rehabilitation that is set forth in this interior, the Secretary of the Interior standards.
Thank you, Commissioner Trueblood. Commissioner McMahon? I believe you're on. We can't hear you, Commissioner McMahon.
Let's try again. Thank you. No, great presentation. I have no questions at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner May?
Yeah, I would have to say, I think that Commissioner Trueblood did a good job of summarizing the quandary here. You know, Section 106 is pretty clear, and the intervention that's proposed with the changes to the wall, the main partition wall in particular, I think are problematic. I mean, you know, I asked some of our folks to take a look at that and got a fairly critical response about how, how big a change this is and how difficult it would be to say that this is somehow necessary. And I, and I think that's really what it comes down to, is, you know, the need to do this is not very clear. You know, it's necessary from an acoustic perspective. I, you know, I have to believe there are other solutions to addressing the acoustic considerations that don't involve replacement of that entire feature, which is part of the, you know, it's one of the defining features of the Sculpture Garden. So it's, I mean, it's, I'm still having trouble getting to the point where I could say that this is acceptable. I mean, I think there are other aspects of it that are great. You know, I love the idea of reopening the tunnel. And I think that the, you know, the fact that the existing reflecting pool would stay in place and there's been an adaptation of that performance space to meet the programmatic need and be respectful of the existing landscape. I mean, I think that's a substantial change as well. I'm not totally sold on the whole of the changes to accessibility because it does sort of create a side door as opposed to having, you know, accessibility at the main entrance. But I think that's a secondary consideration, given all the other things that are going on. And I do appreciate the idea of having that original larger opening onto the, into the Sculpture Garden from the mall. But yeah, it's that, it's that partition wall and changing it to stone, but I think is, remains problematic. And like Commissioner Trueblood, you know, the change in the height, maybe. I mean, I think it's arguable that it, that it should be something that once you walk into that, you know, intermediate level that you can see over it. But it's the, even the material changes is still causes great anxiety. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Commissioner May. Commissioner Argo?
Thank you. I would align myself with, with Commissioner Wright's comments, if I may, Peter. And I would, I would add that in particular, I think that, I think we all seem to be a little troubled with, with the wall and the, the material substance of a wall. And to me, it looks like, and this is my only comment about it really, which I don't know if it's very helpful, but it looks like somebody's trying to put their stamp on it. From a design perspective, and the stamp that is not consistent with the original vision or design. So, those are my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Argo. Commissioner Wright, any additional comments?
Well, this is such an interesting problem. If you take all of the, what has been sort of an emotional argument out of it, it, for those of us who toil away in the trenches of historic preservation and design, it's, it's, historic preservation feels very subjective sometimes in interpretation of the standards and all this. And in this case, the juxtaposition of artistic vision and historic preservation make preservation look downright objective. And I think that's the problem. Because in the end, it seems to come down, the acoustics argument. I, I'm, I'm not an, I'm not an expert in acoustics, so I'll take your word for it. I believe you, and that would be important. But that is the most concrete, with no pun intended, example of the, a physical manifestation of the artistic vision that's made, that, or rather, the acoustic issue is the one that has been made clear that the physical manifestation, that it's necessary as a physical manifestation of the artistic vision. I, I'm not going to arrive at my, at a conclusion until I see it in person. I would say, and since I've been rabidly misquoted as saying if the wrong stacked stone was picked, it would look, it could smack of the Olive Garden. This is not... could smack of the Olive Garden. This is not Olive Garden, not even close. I actually, I think that it's the right color. It's not too busy. It's not too horizontal and, you know, the kind of stack stone that results in sort of a striped look, and it's very busy. This is from what I've seen on video and in photographs, very possible. But in the end, the question really becomes for preservation, does it change the composition in a, in a material, oh, bad word, does it constitute in design terms a cardinal change? I'm so trying to avoid accidental puns. So I guess I think what's troubling me more is this tapered business, because I, I think that's more of an intrusion than the materiality. The silhouette is, you know, how there are certain grace notes of design that mark a particular era. And the, the silhouette of these, this, these tapered walls are troubling to me. I get, I get the acoustics. Again, I believe that. I don't know if there's another way to solve that. But, but it strikes me as if you drive around and you see any, for example, it's particularly evident in residential design. If you've noticed, everybody's got tapered columns now. It's kind of like tapered square columns, holding up their very fancy porticoes. And it's, it, it has, it has, it strikes me as something that will, I, I, I'm not sure that, that, that the artist designer is trying to put his stamp on the garden, so much as what troubles me is that this will mark the garden as a particular, a particularly, a composition that becomes dated very quickly because of that silhouette. Now, I, but on the other hand, I could argue that, and that's why I asked the question, it could be seen as a riff of, off the, an adaptation of the plaza walls, and therefore hang the whole thing together. So until and unless I, until I see it in, in person, I'll withhold judgment. But I think these are, are important issues. A lot of people that I have talked to have said, well, geez, it's, you know, why is it all coming down to this wall? And I think the question is, not even the ones that I've just raised, does it, does it represent a cardinal change in the overall composition? And I'm not, I'm not sure that it does, just in materiality. But again, when I think about the combination of the tapering and the materials, it could. So I'll have to see it in person. But I have to say, I think the stack stone, quite apart from, it's, it's beautifully executed, and it's very subtle. And it has, it, it, it's the right color. And so all that, all of those issues, I, for me anyway, go away. So it's a much, it's a much bigger picture question of the whole composition. And we can't, I can't know that until I'm, I'm in the garden and see the mockups in, in real time. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. I, I'd like to add a couple of comments, and I appreciate the, the thoughtful comments and consideration of everyone involved in this conversation, from the, the commissioners to what the Smithsonian is trying to achieve here, and appreciate how difficult it is to, to try to accommodate curation in this really iconic space. And a couple of comments, just to follow up on Commissioner Wright, I think the interpartition wall as a contributing factor is a very important piece of the original composition. Lester Collins didn't touch that, and it is, to me, a cardinal change in many ways that I'm struggling with. I do think the stack stone is, is quite beautiful. But you're, what is being proposed is a change in the height, a change in the material, and a change in the shape. So I, I do think that's more than a subtle change. I, I can understand what you're saying, Commissioner Wright, about the, the composition, and how the other elements of stack stone would work together. But I think the original partition wall was anything but subtle. It was in your face. The whole composition of that sculpture garden was sort of a rebellious idea when it was designed, and the historic nature of it. So, so that's why I don't envy you, your task at the Smithsonian, trying to make this a, a space that works for what your, your program needs are. And I think those are, are quite laudable. I was struck by the statistics around how many people visit the inside of the museum, and how many people visit the sculpture garden, and what, what accounts for that disparity. And I think the Lester Collins and the landscape enhancements that made it a more habitable space were really important. And I understand you're trying to achieve that. On the, on the acoustics, I think that, again, to, to speak to what Commissioner Trueblood said with the Section 106, there's a solution for acoustics. It doesn't, yes, the stack stone and the tapering, I am sure makes a big difference, but I think there is a way to address acoustics that would ameliorate the situation. And I, I really appreciate that you're still working through that process, and I appreciate what you've done to respond to all of the concerns you're hearing from sort of the preservation side of the community who care so deeply about this space. And then finally, just the opportunity to come and have this conversation with us, so we can really understand what your vision is and how you're trying to accomplish it. And the, you know, you have three very significant designers, artists, architects, masters, trying to make this space work. So it's not a, it's not an easy job that you have by any stretch. But I think you've heard it, the, the commission really needs to think about this, go out, visit the space again, hear, hear more from the community, because we, you know, I am sure we'll have lots of feedback and testimony at our next meeting. But I just, again, want to thank Ms. Chu and the Smithsonian team, as well as our staff, for working together, trying to address these issues, helping us understand the choices, and the opportunity to learn more about the project. So with that, thank you very much. And we will continue to weigh these decisions as we try to seek that balance between the needs of a historic mark and today's needs for historic or cutting edge curation of, of modern art. So thank you very much for, for your time. So
Thank you, Vice Chair White.
Thank you. Thank you. With that, I would say let's move to our next agenda item, which is 8B, an information presentation on the Pennsylvania Avenue Initiative. So I believe we have Ms. Richley, who's going to be making the presentation. Hi, there you are.
Hi. Good afternoon, Madam Vice Chair and Commissioners. Thank you for the time to update you on the Pennsylvania Avenue Initiative. Today, I'd like to share two important items. The first is the interagency work to advance a new vision for the avenue, one that involves physical and programming improvements to make this an engaging destination for the capital city. And I'd also like to invite you and the public to join us later this month for an online event discussing big ideas for the avenue's future. For those not familiar with the initiative, let me walk through a quick overview. Almost 50 years ago, Congress created the Pennsylvania Avenue Development Corporation, or PADC, and they directed them to prepare a master plan for the area outlined here in blue. Now, as many of you know, this was the time of urban renewal, and downtown Washington was a much different place than it is today. So we're now working towards updating that PADC plan. And the initiative includes that area, as well as the federal triangle down here. So the whole current study area is shown in orange. Now, this is about 1.2 miles of Pennsylvania Avenue, primarily between the White House and US Capitol. We have a concentration of federal and private office uses and about 1,500 residents that live in the vicinity. Beyond this segment of the avenue, though, this street runs directly through four of Washington's wards and serves as a strong capital city symbol for all eight. There have been a lot of economic and physical changes in this area over the years. And one significant change occurred with the permanent closure of streets around the White House here on the West End, cutting off two of the primary east-west thoroughfares across the city. Now, this rerouted traffic, both vehicular and pedestrian, and increased the traffic on nearby streets, and really isolated the avenue from the city's fabric. If you add in the land use mix and the different development patterns on each side of the street, you really have a dividing line here between private development to the north and cultural uses to the south. The initiative is looking to mend this division and make this a special place for everyone in the capital city. The avenue has a lot of features working to its advantage, of course, specifically its cohesive historic streetscape. Laid out in the LaFonte Plan to serve as the people's promenade, it's one of the strongest physical representations of democracy in the country. This is a place that links two branches of our government and belongs to all Americans. It's really the place for people to have their voices heard in the capital city. But it also has a lot of physical and operational challenges. And the PADC was dissolved in 1996, and since then, there hasn't been one steward in charge of its upkeep and programming. Now, while the responsible, responsible agencies really do what they can to keep the street in good repair, this place competes for resources with other very important places in Washington's Monumental Core. And as such, the images shown here have become commonplace. The street has lost some of its luster. The federal and local agencies with avenue responsibilities are shown here on the screen, and they all recognize that this place and the people that visit it deserve better. Agencies have committed a significant amount of time and money towards this effort, and NCPC is grateful for the strong collaborative partnership, especially given all the other priorities and diverse missions of these entities. The Initiative's Executive Committee has researched and analyzed multiple facets of the avenue, including its urban design, economic development and real estate, transportation, and historic preservation. And this work has identified a considerable number of findings, but probably the most significant one is an extra 20 feet of roadway that could be used for another purpose. This additional space has spurred much of the physical planning work in progress today. All of the work here is covered in the 2018 Findings and Strategies Summary that's available on the project website. With those research and findings in place, the Executive Committee then developed four goals included in that summary to guide the work moving forward. First is to celebrate the avenue's civic role and democratic experience. Second is to create an awe-inspiring streetscape to complement the avenue's role and architectural character. Third is to reinvigorate the avenue's circulation and mobility for 21st century needs. And finally, the initiative wants to elevate the identity of the avenue as a great daily destination. The summary also includes an agreed-upon approach to re-envision the avenue and update the Pennsylvania Avenue Plan. The committee's work is in the second or short-term phase now, it's outlined in green here. And there are two important pieces of the puzzle to bring the avenue back to life. The first piece is assessing how to improve special events programming and operations that could happen now and into the future. The other piece involves exploring potential physical changes that could occur over the long term. And this, of course, would require a robust public outreach process through NEPA and Section 106. And ultimately, this work would, would guide the Pennsylvania Avenue Plan update. So what exactly are the initiative partners discussing for programming and physical improvements? Well, the work, of course, began before this past tumultuous year, but many of the improvements under discussion are much more relevant than ever as we, as we recover and move forward. So the city has done an amazing job during the pandemic retooling public spaces throughout Washington to create unique experiences for residents and visitors and support the local economy. The initiative is taking all of that knowledge and applying it to help the avenue transform into a stage. From a programming perspective, the partners are exploring ways to make the avenue a shared destination at a national level for authentic experiences for everyone. This would build upon the existing First Amendment demonstrations and events the avenue's well-known for, and adding events with unforgettable moments for those who come and visit. The programming will reinforce the avenue's role as a welcoming and inclusive place that embodies the symbol of democracy, becoming the home for one-of-a-kind experiences for locals and visitors alike. And it will attract some of the most innovative events with special infrastructure to support security, communications, and other behind-the-scenes needs. This will really help the avenue be that link between the local and national facets of Washington, showcasing the best of the capital city and our country's arts, culture, and entertainment talent. To complement the programming work, the initiative is also exploring three distinct lenses or conceptual themes that could guide the physical experience of this special place. All the lenses include elements that enhance the physical space, engage visitors, support events, and achieve sustainability goals. However, each does so in a slightly unique way. Urban Capital Street celebrates local Washington, creating a third place and social hub that connects all eight wards through strong mobility and daily programming connections. Civic Stage imagines the avenue as a national event destination with comfort amenities and the special events infrastructure to attract a variety of innovative experiences. And Green Street transforms the avenue into an urban linear park, showcasing the ecological history of the avenue and sustainability best practices. The partners are now refining these conceptual lenses and will be sharing them with the public for their feedback later this year. Before those lenses are released for public discussion, though, we have an exceptional panel lined up to kick off the conversation and share their big ideas for the avenue. In 2018, before the start of work on programming and physical improvements, the Executive Committee invited six panelists shown here to share their ideas on transforming the avenue. They represent some of the strongest and well-respected voices from commercial real estate, architecture, special events, operations, landscape architecture, and transportation. Their work was an inspirational catalyst for the initiative's decision-makers to consider a new vision for Pennsylvania Avenue, and we hope they'll inspire you too. Kathleen McGeehan, editor-in-chief at Architectural Record, will be moderating a lively discussion and taking audience questions as well. As we reflect on this past year, the panelists will discuss how one of the most symbolic public spaces in the country can transform into an inclusive civic stage for the city and nation. This is where people can gather, celebrate, and reconnect in a way only experienced in the nation's capital. The panel will also discuss transforming the avenue into a one-of-a-kind daily experience for Washingtonians and visitors, using better design to elevate the avenue's civic role as a place for democratic expression in the lives of Americans, positioning the avenue to showcase the best of arts, culture, and entertainment through spectacular events, and leveraging economic strategies and partnerships to make these ideas a reality. So please visit NCPC's website to register and join us June 29 at noon Eastern Time. The event is at the beginning of a public conversation on a new vision for Pennsylvania Avenue, and additional meetings will be held later this year and into 2022 to gain public input and feedback on potential ideas for the avenue's future. In closing, initiative partners are working towards a once-in-a-generation moment to elevate the avenue and meet the needs of the city and nation. Places where we can all come together to collectively recognize the past and look forward to the future don't get any better than Pennsylvania Avenue. And with the nation's 250th birthday coming up in 2026, it's hard to imagine a better location to create a welcoming place that celebrates all the unique facets of our country. I look forward to returning to the commission later this year for an update on the lenses and related public outreach efforts. And in the meantime, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Richley. This is such an exciting initiative, and I appreciate your ability to capture that excitement in, in a very short period of time. And I, I want to thank you and Mina and Peter and Andrew Marcel and all of our other federal and local partners for their leadership on this Pennsylvania Avenue Initiative. As you said, it is iconic, and it plays such an important role in our national life. And thinking about those big birthdays coming up, this really is the right time to be focused on it. And I also appreciate the emphasis on being inclusive and equitable in a place for all Washingtonians and any, anyone in America to really come and enjoy and be part of. So particularly in the wake of the pandemic, as the, as everyone sort of focuses on being in public space with one another again, I, I think we have a really important opportunity here to, to focus on the contribution of Pennsylvania Avenue. here to, to focus on the contribution of Pennsylvania Avenue to our quality of life. So at this point, I'd like to ask if the commission has any questions for Ms. Ridgely. Otherwise, we'll just open it up for discussion. So any questions? So hearing no questions, I would ask to start with Commissioner Trueblood.
I'll just say, I've been involved in this from a few, with a few hats, previously with the Deputy Mayor's Office, and now as Office of Planning Director. And I, I, I've enjoyed the work. I think it's helped move forward. And I think, as Ms. Ridgely mentioned, COVID, I think, has even brought the work, made it even more important. We've seen the importance of, of everything from our public spaces to areas for First Amendment, to areas for, for First Amendment actions, to areas for, for other types of events. So we look forward to continuing to work with you and thinking about how the districts work, especially around areas like Seventh Street, and how we think about our downtown can really connect to some of the work here at Pennsylvania Avenue.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon.
Okay, microphone's there. No, great presentation, great initiative. Look forward to hear more about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner May.
I think Commissioner May had to step away.
All right, we'll come back to him. Commissioner Argo.
I, I really enjoyed the, the presentation. I'm excited about some of the ideas and some of I, one of my, when I first came to Washington, I worked on Pennsylvania Avenue on the fifth floor of one of the, one of the newer buildings. And it was an exciting way to, and place to begin my journey here in the district. So that's just a little personal note, but appreciate the work and look forward to, to all that we'll be dealing with regarding the avenue and its, and its further recognition and development. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that important observation. Your face lights up when you talk about that experience. So that's what we want people to feel about Pennsylvania Avenue. Commissioner Dixon.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I appreciated the presentation and would also light up and smile and say, I served on the PADC board when it was first put together. So I, I lost a lot of skills in these years, but I did my best then.
I have a feeling you're going to be drafted again to help. Commissioner Davis. I think Commissioner Davis may have had to step away. Commissioner Davenport.
No comments at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And unless Commissioner May has returned, I think we will thank Ms. Ridgely. And I do encourage everyone to participate in the upcoming forum. I, I think it's going to be a really lively conversation, and I'll be pushing out that information far and wide for my colleagues who work in the public realm. I think it's going to be a really interesting, a really interesting conversation. And Commissioner Wright, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I, I did. I don't want to say anything because this, I mean, except for to plug the event, because this has not always been fun. This work. We, we've wrestled a lot with the ideas and with each other, but the, 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 the time spent with the panel was enriching and inspiring, and they've got, they're, they're really smart people with a lot of cool ideas. So I would urge everyone to plug in for that one, because you'll learn something. I did.
It's a great point. It does, it doesn't always have to be fun, but it's certainly important work, and I really appreciate everybody's commitment to it. And with that agenda item, this concludes our open session agenda, and we will meet again on Thursday, July 1 at 1:00 PM. And if there's no other business to come before the commission, the open session is now adjourned.